Welcome, everybody, to our meeting. Thank you for coming. And could we have roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Broden Byer.
Here.
And Mayor Mersch.
I'm here. Pledge of allegiance, Dr. Black, would you like to lead us this evening?
Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay. Any presentations, proclamations, announcements? I don't see any. Prove the order of the agenda. I would like to, since we have some people in the audience so that they don't have to spend the night here with us, I would like to move 13A up to, like, before 10, before commission items. Is that okay?
Yes.
Remind me when I get there that I have to do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other, anybody else want to move anything on the agenda?
Does Kathleen have something here?
Well, she's F.
Eight F.
Yeah.
So we can just pull that.
We'll pull it.
So when we get, when we get to that, we'll, we'll do her. I see no blue folder items this evening. Do we have any public content, comment on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, moving right along, the consent calendar.
Okay.
We call item eight H.
H.
H. Okay, we're going to pull that.
And I would ask for eight D, as in David, and eight F as in Frank.
Okay. And I would like to do eight F out of sequence if possible.
Yes.
So we can have.
Make a motion, we approve as presented, eight A, B, C, E, G.
Have a second?
Second.
So, so Mood, I don't have to take a vote on that, do I?
No, you just have to say all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay. So passes. Excluded consent calendar items. So we're going to take by agreement eight F out and do that first. So let me get to that. E and F. Okay. This item is to consider and approve the planned expenditures for fiscal year 2024, 2025, safe, clean water, measure W, municipal program funds for submission to Los Angeles County Flood Control District. I'm just going to do the report on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
President of City Council. This item was approved by the LA County Voters for Measure W back in 2018. It's a tax measure that is estimated to raise about $280 million annually for stormwater projects. We've hired Kathleen McGowan in order to handle our stormwater management program here. The purpose of the LA County Flood Control District, they're actually the ones that administer the program. They distribute the funds, provide staffs, support, and oversee capacity building programs. Cities will receive that funding through the municipal program proportional to the revenues generated within their boundaries. And it's projected that the city will receive approximately $100,000 during fiscal year 2024 to 2025 in municipal program funds. The city must spend about at least 70% of those municipal program funds on eligible facilities related to new projects or programs, and up to 30% of the city municipal funds may be used to pay for eligible costs and expenses related to continuation of programs. 20% of the city's projected municipal fund, program funds will be set aside in case revenues are lower than anticipated, and program funds are allocated as described in the attached expenditure budget spreadsheet. And as I mentioned before, we have Kathleen McGowan representing. She is here today.
Before we bring Ms. McGowan up, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Derringer, you were the one that wanted to pull this item.
Yeah, my questions were for Ms. McGowan.
Okay. Kathleen, thank you for coming.
Of course. All right. So I wanted to ask a question under item eight, I mean, one A, there's a, the source, and it talks about that there was $10,000 in new costs, and there was also an escalation by 20% for an increasing cost for the base program fee under a new amendment of the MOU. So my, I question generally, why were the program costs increased? By whom were they increased? And were there any arguments against these increase? And what, what's our share? If it's going to be shared by others, what's, so those are my questions as to that item.
Okay. So these are estimates because we have to plan the budget in advance. So the, but the reason we are trying to project increases associated with new effort is that we're trying to help the city recover as much of their costs under the measure W funds. And the more costs there are in the new effort column, the more we can recover for your stormwater programs. So you haven't yet agreed to a revised MOU for the harbor toxics. It's in the works. We have seen a proposal from the consultant, and we do know they actually split their proposal between new requirements under a revision of the total maximum daily loads for the harbor. That did get promulgated by the Water Board. So we have an estimate of what those new costs are. We don't know yet what the cost share is going to be. It's a lot of, it would be a lot of work for us to try to calculate that when there's another consultant that's going to do that soon. So we just kind of estimated what we thought the increased amount would be to the city just as a placeholder for this planning purposes. You'll definitely see what those are when that MOU comes out to us. So really, this is a planning exercise, kind of like your budgeting process. And then the other 10,000 is again, an estimate, it might be high, for new effort under the Coordinated Integrated Monitoring Program. When the new program is approved, we're still going back and forth with the Water Board on what exactly is going to be required, and we're actually going to reduce some costs too, which is, so it was really just a placeholder so that we could have a line item in this budget that is for new effort. And we just, so we put these in here. There's no harm, no foul if we go under or over in the actual cost next year, but we need to have a line item if we're going to have new effort because we can't have recovered costs for something we didn't put a planned line item in the plan for. We get dinged and we have to go to the county and ask forgiveness after the fact if we spend the money on something that wasn't planned. So really just trying to forecast where we see changes. So that was the strategy. You haven't yet committed to these extra costs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was thinking, I don't remember this.
Yeah, you haven't seen this.
Okay, thank you. So my memory is not failing. All right, good. That's always helpful. I just didn't, I missed that. So then with the next item, there's increased costs that they have for the simp and the harbor toxics monitoring.
Right.
Based on, it says, a new requirement in the 2021 regional stormwater permit, and then the revised harbor toxics. So is this another one that is in the works that that's, is that one complete?
The combined increased monitoring costs that the city may incur combined between the coordinated integrated monitoring program, which the Peninsula Agencies implement, and the harbor toxics monitoring, which is done through a separate MOU. So we put both of the new costs for monitoring into one line item, and one B, and that's, so both of those are discussed in that line item. One A is just the ongoing costs for those programs that wouldn't be considered new effort, and that's the $65,000 cost estimate.
Okay. And then the one B, is that something that's in the works as well, or does that have?
That's the one I was just talking about.
Okay.
With the estimates that we made about the new costs, that's one B. So we wanted just, one A and one B are both monitoring program costs. One A is the ongoing effort, not new, but regular ongoing effort, and one B is all, is the projected new effort that wasn't previously, like, in the scope, that we think we can categorize in the 70% category to increase your cost recovery. The more we get in that 70% column, the more we can recover of the ongoing costs because of the 70/30 ratio.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then under number three, you talk about executing a new municipal transfer agreement with the flood district. So is this, is this something, you know, with regard to the flood district, is something that we already have in place with the, with the LA County Flood Control District? Because I don't, do we have any, I don't think we have any flood control district property or jurisdiction in the city, do we?
This transfer agreement is for you to receive the measure W funds. You already have one in place, but it's going to expire, so there's going to be a new one. And that's not the only cost in that line item. It's just we identify that as an effort that we didn't have to do this year, so it's slightly increased effort depending on what flood control sends you. So right now, in order to receive your measure W funds, you have to have this executed transfer agreement, and they're constantly changing the program. So we don't know whether there's going to be some new rigmarole you have to go through or if it's just going to be a simple, it's never, it never seems to be just without any changes. So that's in there, but there are other costs that go into this line item, like the fact that I'm here tonight, we're going through the planning effort, we have to submit a plan. What you see here is just the budget part of the plan. The thing we actually submit gets really long, it's a lot of narrative, so we prepare that. And then we have to do an annual report on the actual expenditures and a long narrative that goes with that, and we have to do those two things both every year. And so that, but, the good thing is that this effort can be recovered, you can recover it with measure W funds. So this line item three is our estimate of what we might, what we're likely to incur next year if we, if you continue with us for your consulting services, and even if you don't, you're going to hire somebody else, there'll be another, a cost. It might be slightly more or slightly less than ours, but in the end, you still need a line item for that to be able to recover the cost in your plan. So that's what this is for.
All right. Okay, I understand that. Thank you. And then finally, number, not quite finally, number six, it talks about direct costs invoiced by you for website hosting and media kit revision. Is this the work that you do on the South Bay Cog website?
Yes.
It's, so this is the, this is the amount that we would pay or have paid in the past?
It's our estimate of where, you know, similar to, it's very similar to what we've spent the current year. So it's a combination of our time plus the fees we pay to South Bay Cog for maintaining the website and updating it for us. Also, we use some graphic designer assistance for some other outreach materials as well. And all this is cost shared between about six or seven cities. So you guys are just paying a small percentage of the, like, about a sixth of the total cost in most cases. We try to make sure we, we distribute it fairly. So if some other city comes in and wants to utilize a material we're doing, then we reduce the cost to everybody else, and we charge them a little bit on the side. So these are much lower than what the actual costs are. So South Bay Cog is, like, charging us about $10,000 a year for their maintenance of their, their website and all that for, that are split between the Beach Cities Group and the Peninsula Cities Group.
Okay. If they charge you $10,000, then why are we doing the $6,000?
Well, because some of this is our time, and some of this is, there's a, this is everything including other direct costs. So it's our task eight point two and two point one costs, which are, you know, permit requirements for outreach and engagement, which we do jointly. And some of that has to do with website hosting. Other of it may have to do with development. For example, right now, we're in the middle of revising the construction brochure for construction sites to make sure that they're complying with the current permit requirements, which were revised. So we do a number of things under outreach and engagement in that task six. And you review our proposal every year for that. So again, this is just an estimate based on previous, our previous experience with the program and what we forecast needs to be done next year. Again, you'll get a formal proposal from us if you want to keep using us for these services, and, you know, you all review and approve that. Scope of work, which is longer than what I've got written here, it's just, we're, this is just abbreviated to help you review the budget and the planning for this measure W fund. So what we're doing here is recovering costs that are required under the stormwater permit under measure W because it's an outreach and engagement effort, and it's new efforts because we have to constantly update the program. Oh, the other thing we have to do with outreach and engagement under the permit is to track metrics in terms of how many website hits, how many people have seen our outreach to the best extent we can. So that's a new permit requirement. So it's not just being able to just kind of carry on with existing material without revisions.
Okay. And since eight point two and two point one aren't separately listed here, you just can briefly describe what those other tasks are that they're lumped together in with the cost share with the, for the services you do for the cog?
So two point one is the more specific, specific support that we provide for outreach and engagement, specific to Rolling Hills. And eight point two is the, our time on joint outreach efforts that are shared among the other agencies that we consult for. And so we have that, those separate, because sometimes we do some things that are specific to your individual website or, you know, putting some materials up there. Somebody's draining a pool, you know, we have these brochures that you disseminate, or just helping with a webs, with an article in your Blue Newsletter. We usually publish a couple of those a year, trying to target specific things that your residents should be aware of or may be interested in. So the two point one is city-specific, and then eight point two is what we're doing jointly to meet the, you know, and both of those meet permit, the stormwater permit requirements. Yeah.
And then lastly, under seven, it's talking about the city match for the FEMA grant for wildfire control. Now, is this the existing one that we have that we're waiting for funds to implement it, or is this the one that we are proposing to apply for?
It's whatever you all think you need it for. What we were trying to do is because in the past, we've recovered because preventing wildfires prevents stormwater pollution.
Right.
And that, that's documented in the literature. So that's a legitimate expenditure for measure W to prevent particularly, not just, not like people hardening their homes, not preventing the home from burning, but preventing the wildfire from happening in the first place. So I understand you, we spoke with staff in setting this budget up, we've been tracking your wildfire efforts, and we saw that you have applied FEMA and that you need to match. And so this is legitimate. So whatever grant you need to match, assuming it is for wildfire prevention, you can use it for. It's only $50,000 at this point, but it's a line item. If, if we end up having a little more that you can match with, then great.
Okay. Well, that's great. Okay. Well, that's very good. I'm glad to hear that.
And that's all in the 70% column, so it lets us recover more of the ongoing simp monitoring that's in the 30%.
Okay. So that, that number is adjustable if we need to increase it to, to our portion of the grant?
If you have, yeah, if the money is available. So we just estimated what we thought you would get, we're going to have to spend next year, and we're setting the budget accordingly with, and actually, there was a slight, I missed it when I reviewed your staff report, John, we actually only held back 10% rather than 20% for, like, to, in terms of what we thought you had available in estimating these things. So once we know what you actually spent this year, then we'll know a little bit better how much you can spend next year. So we'll adjust. Yeah.
Okay. So is there a benefit to actually, I mean, because I forget how much our share is for the existing grant. We know that, maybe, I mean, if we have it there.
So all the.
Do we need to increase it now?
All the FEMA grants that we have require a 25% city match.
I know, but I mean, for the one that's specifically designated for wildfire, is all of them are?
They're all, they all require a 25% local match.
Yeah. But I mean, is that, how much more than $50,000 is that?
Oh, I don't have those numbers. It's with me. I'd have to get that information for you.
I know, it is a lot more. That's why I'm wondering, since we have.
And if we can do more, you, we can.
There's no issue with increasing it?
No. If we double it, we might have to send the county a special email that says why it was twice what we thought, but if it's just within kind of, you know, plus or minus, there's no big deal.
Okay. All right. Great. Okay.
Any further questions for Ms. McGowan?
I think I know the answer, but is there, can we use measure W funds for anything to do with storm drains, maintenance, repair?
Only if there's a water quality improvement associated with it. So it just a failing drain.
Well, if it's, if it's picking up debris in the drain and taking it down, would that qualify? I mean, if the drain is rotted out and, you know, it's taken soil, you know, that it's eroding soil, or?
I would want to ask the Flood Control District on that specific one. It's sort of a little bit gray area.
Gray, gray works.
So I mean, I wouldn't want to do it, I wouldn't want to commit it if, and then have them ding you for spending money inappropriately.
Right. I, I, that's why I'm asking now, because we don't have a specific defer right now, but.
Well, oh, so you don't want to necessarily put something in the plan for next year? You just wanted to generally ask that? Or, I mean, I can try to ask that question and find out.
And while you're asking that question, if you wouldn't mind, along that same event of storm drains, if preventing a fire is applicable, what is preventing land movement?
So like a landslide that would end up in the ocean?
Yeah. Or in somebody's backyard. It may not have to be in the ocean, but.
Yeah. So sediment, soil, sediment.
Yes.
In stormwater, in stormwater is a pollutant.
Yeah.
And we also happen to know you have pollutants that are associated, that's not just the dirt that's a pollutant, but also there are pollutants adhering to soils that are background that are above limits that we want to see in stormwater. So, yeah.
Are you doing, are you involved in the RPV complex? Are you part of that team?
No. I don't, not that I'm aware of.
I'm surprised, I, I, that land, land movement and stormwater would be part of that.
Okay. Well, I'm not a civil engineer. I'm an environmental engineer, chemical engineer, so I don't get involved in structural, you know, so, slope stability.
A lot of non-ingeieurs on that committee.
Yeah. So that's not my, my area of expertise. I'm not qualified in that area. But if, it's, we could probably make the nexus, and, you know, if you all advise, you want, I mean, we only have so much money you can spend it on, but depending on if it's now or in the future, then we can definitely, if, if it seems a little uncertain, we can definitely get an opinion from Flood Control District on it. Because it's, we get something in our email, then it's good because then we kind of are back up, so.
And we can present something in the future meeting where you can direct staff to do the additional research and working with Kathleen if we need to.
So since this was called, do I have to?
Hold on a second. If you don't figure out how to creatively spend all the money, could you make sure we're getting a running total of what we got left over this year, what we got left over next year, et cetera, et cetera? So as it builds a bucket, that then we can come up with new ways to figure out how to use it, because we're not giving it back?
Absolutely. And actually, we did that on the back, the second page. Did they get that second page?
Make sure that's an ongoing.
Yes, because there's a rule that says you have to spend it within five years. So we have this little check on the back.
I just want to make sure that's a running tab and that if we get near the, more, point was, if we get near the five years, I didn't think about five years, the five years, that you tell us enough so that we can figure out that maybe we add some sort of storm drain here in the parking lot that magically means we have to dig the parking lot up and repave it?
Okay, of course.
Something like that with stormwater.
We are watching that. And yes, we, and we're using the first in, first out rule, so, yeah, we'll do that.
Do we drop some water? We have not solved any waters. That's okay. How many drops have we cleaned for $100,000? Do we have to open? We don't, we don't know the answer.
So, thank you, Kathleen. Really appreciate that, all the work that you do. So now we have to do public comments.
Public comments, yep.
Are there any public comments here and then Kathleen gets to go home?
I make a motion, we approve as presented, eight F.
Grab a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Eight D, Senator Mills.
Yes. I call this because I was questioning our city manager about the amount of $2,760 that we're paying for an annual fee for the web portal resident info trading post. And I understand that it's not being utilized that much, and I was not aware that we are having to pay an annual fee just to keep it open. I thought it was just a setup, and then people, it would just kind of keep going on and, and operate like as a, something that was placed on our website that was utilized. But at this point, I don't know, but, but maybe we should hold this item and like get some more further input from the city staff as to how much is being utilized, whether we want to continue with that because they were incurring that every year, and it's not being utilized. Maybe we want to save those costs.
Do we want to hold it, or is staff prepared to address the scene?
I can.
Yeah.
Provide some information for you. So unfortunately, I'll just give a little bit of background on this. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So I do most of the overseeing of the IT-related stuff. This particular bill came to me sometime in early January or mid-January. I was not familiar with this company. I had to call them, do some research, because the previous city manager dealt with that exclusively. As it turns out, and what Councilmember Derringer is referring to, is that this is a specific item for backend software that runs the trading post that you had directed and the resident portal. I did want to seek metrics on how much are we using that, because I was unaware that we were paying a separate cost. It's being hosted on our website, but the fact that we're, you know, having to use these plugins to make it function, it's quite expensive. And a lot of times, having come from a background that did this, you try to make sure that that is all-inclusive within your hosting plan, not necessarily extra unless you are, you know, a major commercial entity. A lot of the, the resources for this plugin are designed for more commercial marketing and/or store-like web entities. So we're using a fraction of the, the power that we're paying for. But I can't get you the metrics because they shut our resident portal and the trading post down when we didn't pay. It was due sometime in late November, December. So until we pay, I'm unable to have Jimenez Consulting go back in there and actually pull up the metrics as to how many people have utilized the resident portal, how many people are using or not using the trading post. I will say this anecdotally. When we launched the resident portal, I believe it was in around the spring of 2022, we held about a month and a half of inviting residents to come down, and staff would help them get logged in and set up. And people can do it on their own, but some people did come down. I, I, and maybe John can weigh in as well, but we did not have a lot of residents coming in and signing up for the portal. Now, it serves a dual purpose here, right? We, we already are pushing people to sign up for Alert South Bay, which is a notification system. The resident portal, if they sign up for that, we export that data automatically to Alert South Bay. The only difference is that the resident portal has some more detailed information on each household. If they sign up multiple residents within a household, you know, there's some checkboxes there about, you know, whether or not they serve as a block captain, work within the block captain program, are they of the medical profession, have they been, you know.
Somebody that can possibly provide some type of services in an emergent situation.
Alert South Bay doesn't provide us with that information because we're just really trying to use that as a way. Alert South Bay doesn't provide us with that information because we're just really trying to use that as a way to communicate out when there is an emergent situation. So to make a long story short, this clearly was a council direction to create the resident portal and the trading post before John or I or Madam City Manager was here. With the additional costs on top of what we are paying for our website annual costs, staff is starting to have internal conversations about what do we need or don't we need and would like to try to find ways to start to minimize costs for what we're paying for the website and/or associated plugins. And we'll, we'll talk more about that as we go through the budget process.
Um, no, given that we don't have it existing because we didn't pay, maybe we could hold this item and keep it within either a separate conversation on this item, once, maybe they could provide us with the information. They're not going to.
I mean, the whole idea with this, because remember we used to have, people could have for sale stuff or their garage sale stuff. I think it was in the blue newsletter, which is great. People used it all the time. And I think Tony then didn't want that. Is that right? Or was it Elaine? Thought that shouldn't be on the official blue newsletter. So had to go on the, had to go on that.
Been after, after Tony because we were still doing it.
So it must've been. And so then it goes to this, and, and that's not really what I wanted. You know, nobody does that. They all look at the blue news pet letter, but they don't go online and look to see who's having a garage sale. I, I'd say probably not using it. Get rid of it.
I, I'm fine with getting rid of it, but I think we need to pay them something. Us not being organized, which is not your guys' fault, but us not knowing what it is, we can't just be like, yeah, we owe you money since November and we cut it off or whatever. We should find some happy meal. I'm not saying pay him for the whole year, but if he was running for two months, we should pay him for the two months. At least upfront about the part that's our responsibility and then turn it off. And tell them that if they give you the data, we can then have a conversation about maybe turning it back on or, or we go to the blue newsletter or whatever that is. But tell them you'll trade them out two months or whatever that would be of money for the data. Turn it off. And then we'll put a different thing on the agenda to talk about blue newsletter or whatever.
Okay. We can do that.
Yeah, I think it should be time that we, residents were able to use it because if they cut it off in November.
He's going to do the best he can to make it go away without it being a thing. Because we need to stand up for what we said we were doing.
No, I agree. We should pay for services when they were.
I think we could be having another conversation on it when we get more information. So. Any other questions?
I do. On about six or seven lines down, there is a line, it's not a number, it just says check total and it's an amount of twenty-three hundred. What does that represent?
Uh, that represents, when you ever see check total, if you look directly above it, you'll see two items for executive suite services for one thousand one hundred and fifty each. That is the total of those two particular checks. So if you go down to say the next check total, that's for the two will dance in total. Does that make?
What is the reason or purpose to have that subtotal there?
That's a good question. I would ask the finance department, you know, this is a past practice of how they have always laid it out and I can ask them why.
It's just a little distracting because I have to ask you what it's for. Okay.
Well, but on the other hand, I could see that you would want to know that there were two different invoices paid on the same check.
Oh, is that what it is? Oh, okay. I didn't see there's the same check number.
Yeah, and same thing if you go down.
Okay.
So for the well Dan.
Well, I, I don't know if we could, if the check total line of that somehow tied to what it was totaling because I'm not, it's not intuitive, at least not to me.
It's not intuitive.
We can take it back to Robert and his team.
All right. Maybe just a different presentation that's more intuitive.
Yeah, well, now we know.
But now that we know what it is, do we need to change it?
Well, uh.
We already knew. No, I, I have no problem. I'm just saying it's.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to pay extra just for them to change the format necessarily.
I'm fine.
Don't go changing. And comment from the public on this item. Here are none moving.
Make a motion. We approve as presented.
Except for, except for the.
What's going to happen? What's happening with that?
I just wanted to make.
With the change? With the changes.
Been previously corrected. So I, I do just want to be clear for, and so is there a dollar amount for which the council is comfortable? I know you said two months. I'm not sure that this outfit, and, and Mr. Horvath, you can correct me if I'm wrong, has a monthly charge. They're going to tell him you have to pay for it. You know, we, we have an, we have an annual pay or? I will have to have a discussion with them because you also mentioned that you wanted to retain any data in there. And so I'll have to see.
I'll retain. Just give to us. We're going to give them their money and then.
We'll be done.
And we'll be done.
Right.
I'll just need to.
And if it gets stupid, bring it back.
Got it.
And so we're approving everything except for that item to be addressed later. So, right?
Yeah, we're approving. Christian's going to do the best he can. If it seems reasonable, let's make this go away. Right?
Okay.
It's going to be coming back to us, right?
No, it's only going back if Christian has a problem. You shouldn't be talking about.
Unless there's a problem, there will be a future payment of bills with a smaller amount for Caspio for, as directed by the council. To clo, to close it out and.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
So there's a motion, but I haven't.
In a second.
Oh, second. I have a second.
Thank you. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much. So moved. You're on a roll tonight, B. Eight H?
Dr. Black.
I just want to do it so I can move. No, that's all.
Oh, okay. This is adopted resolution authorizing a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget.
I have a feeling.
Of the eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand five hundred for the transfer from the general fund reserves and approve the fourth amendment to the professional services agreement with Pacific Architecture and Engineering covering additional design and engineering services for the city hall ABA improvement project. So you don't have any questions, just to know, okay? Anybody have any questions on this item? Any comments from the public on this item? Anything have a motion on this? I know that Jen's going to.
Make a motion. We approve as presented.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Dr. Black?
Okay.
See, the government system works.
Okay, thirteen A.
But we didn't actually clarify.
We've reported on it though.
Yes, we have.
And we voted.
Spend a lot of time on it. Okay, this is going to be item thirteen A. We've moved forward. This is consideration of a professional services agreement with valid specialists and consultant to provide additional high-quality educational or business services on an emergency basis for a not to exceed amount of ten thousand dollars covering a trial period of up to six months.
Evening again, mayor and council members. Thank you. As you recall, at the last city council meeting, we had a robust discussion surrounding coyote management. We had representatives here from LA County's Weights and Measures Department to talk about their existing program, how it functions, the protocols they use to determine when they move beyond education and go into mitigation efforts with regards to coyotes who tend to show less fear towards humans and/or, you know, start to develop aggressive behaviors towards humans. With that said, the direction of the council that evening was to come back with this item. And you asked us to look into multiple providers and get some prices for individuals or vendors who could help us with additional emergency services, coyote abatement, above and beyond what Weights and Measures can provide us with their two days a week that they are here in the city. With that said, in the staff report, you'll see that we talked to three different vendors. The first being Fernando Barrera, his, who is a former agricultural Weights and Measures employee, but he has started Wildlife Specialist and Consultant, WSC. He is here tonight with us in case you have any questions for him. The second is the vendor that Rancho Palos, the city of Rancho Palos Verdes uses, which is Coyote Wildlife and Pest Solutions Incorporated. That is Mr. Rizzo. And then the third was Animal Pest Management Services, and they also service local Southern California cities, including in the past, I believe, Palos Verdes Estates. I put a table within the staff report for you laying out their prices. I'll just go through it very quickly, but Mr. Barrera continues to do the same type of work that he did with Weights and Measures. He has rates of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for consultation and education with residents. He has a five-day trapping fee of a thousand dollars, a ten-day trapping fee of two thousand dollars, and then for longer-term trapping solutions, he is available, that is available on request. Mr. Rizzo's company, CWPS, they only quoted us a price for a two-week or ten-day trapping period. And then they also do programs like they do with the city of Rancho Palos Verdes for a month, six-month and/or annual services. APMMS, the last one I mentioned, they also gave us only a quote for ten-day trapping, which is again, two weeks. They did not give us any quotes for long-term trapping. As you will see in the report, Mr. Barrera's costs are the lowest out of all three. Plus, Mr. Barrera has a great deal of familiarity, not only with our community, but with the entire peninsula. He is currently providing services to residents privately since his retirement with the county. And with that said, staff is recommending, recommending that we undertake a six-month trial period at a not to exceed of ten thousand dollars to hire Mr. Barrera for additional services for coyote mitigation and/or abatement. I'm available for any questions, and I think Mr. Barrera is also available if so desired.
I have a question. How, how'd you come up with the ten thousand dollar number?
I think the way staff looked at it was that is trapping either a five-day or a ten-day period, a ten-day period that allows him to work in five different sections of the city. And if it was for a five-day period, potentially ten different sections in the city.
My math comes to twelve thousand for six months.
At two thousand dollars.
Or ten days, you want ten days a month? So that's six months would be twelve thousand.
Oh, no, no, no. The services, so it's. So I'm sorry. I, I see what you're saying. You're, you're breaking it down to if there was, if it was on a month, using the service once a month for that. Correct. No, I, I think it, it's, it's an, on an as-needed basis. So we would, much like we use the Weights and Measures system, they only bill us when they are called out for service. So it would be the same thing. We would, we would set a six-month window for the services to be used, but we're making an assumption, and that's where we came up with the ten thousand dollar amount, is that we would use a ten-day trapping service five times over the course of that six months. Or it would be, you know, the potential of using a five-day service ten times over the course of that six months.
I think we need more.
Well, and that, and that, and so the, the amount is, is really at the discretion of the council. This is just a recommendation. Our, our contract with county right now is a twenty-five thousand dollar not to exceed. And I believe I put in here. What we, yeah.
So we now know that's twenty-five thousand thrown down the toilet. So as soon as we can get out of that, we do. But this is not wasted money.
Right, but we don't spend, just so you know, it's a budget amount that we set with county. We, we spend it if they, if they perform services that require fees. They don't charge us when they do the consultation or the education. That is free. So they're, they're out here twice weekly, free. It's only when we have a situation where there is an endangerment of humans and then they will charge us for the trapping. And, and maybe Mr. Barrera can provide some of that insight, you know, as a former employee and now as a private contractor.
We already had them in it. They have not had anybody out trapping. The answer is zero.
So my feeling is we should be using the county for the education, go meet people until not, whatever, all that stuff. It's already covered in our taxes. We use that for all we can. Then when someone has a problem, we switch over. My question would be if to get more, if not, and since you say ten days of trapping, it's not ten days sitting on my property to trap, it's ten days in the city trapping at multiple locations? Is that what you just said?
No, I think, and Mr. Barrera can speak to this more. I think what he, he or any of the trappers tend to do is they come out, they evaluate, they set their traps where they think they'll be in the, the best location for what they've been called out for, and they will stay out and monitor them over a ten-day period.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. The thousand dollars for five days, that's not here present in the city eight hours a day.
No, 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 no. It's, it's the period of time that the traps are set and laid out.
Does that include any services beyond or in addition to setting traps?
I, I would let Mr. Barrera, no, I, I would let Mr. Barrera speak to any specifics.
The rest of the questions are from Mr. Barrera.
Well, I, well, can I just, one little thing is, is maybe instead of doing this, whatever the amount is, ten thousand or whatever, if we told everyone that we, that he was back and is no longer the county not doing anything, I think people would be like, oh, I got a problem. I mean, I got four coyotes in my backyard every single day. Is, so with that, is should we also do it this way? Because it's not that much money. Is what if we split it with the residents or do something like that where, hey, you pay a thousand bucks?
Well, I'd like to hear what Fernando's.
I know, but that's.
I want to hear what.
It might be a way to get way more because, I mean, I pay more than on gophers than I pay for this.
He can, he can, he can speak to how many residents he has privately contracted with right now. And then as, as we saw in our staff report presented the last time, I think we have spent around six thousand dollars of our twenty-five thousand for trapping that the county has performed, or actually that Fernando performed this. Yeah, while, while, while he was with the county. That's great.
Okay, so are we?
Yeah.
I'd like to open the public. Fernando, welcome back.
Thank you. All right. To answer the question for the ten days is according with our experience, sometime take two weeks for the coyotes to take that loop coming back to the same property. So everybody have, the trapper have more chance to get a coyote in ten days or two weeks period for the coming back. I don't agree with that because what happened is you set the trap in the first night or second night, you get the coyote. Why are you going to continue trapping? So that's why I don't agree with the two-week trapping. I said, let's trap one week, see what happens. If we catch the coyote, fine, then we stop trapping. If not, then then we go to the second week. But most trappers will trap for two weeks in a row because they get more chance to catch the coyote.
You, so looking at this five-day and ten-day fee schedule, do you feel that for you for six months is ten thousand dollars adequate? Or is that going to?
Depends on how many calls we had, depends on the activity.
You've been here for years. You understand. I mean.
Yeah, well, not everybody that called for service, we're going to be trapping. That's, you know, we're trying to avoid. I saw the coyote passing over there. So that's not a coyote that's a problem. I got called because they said the coyote was going to attack me over there. What happened? They say, oh, the coyote was looking at me. So that coyote was hungry and people are feeding them, so they see human and see food. But when the coyotes come in and they start to taking pets out of the area, when they're treating the light of kids, especially kids, and then that grant is for set a trap. And maybe take a week, maybe take two weeks to get out of it. But six week, I mean, six, ten thousand dollars for six months, it may be enough, maybe not.
Then the other question is shooting. So I know it's different if you're contracted to private person versus a city. What are you allowed to do as far as shooting?
When I was working for the county and I still have my license, it's, I went to the police academy and I passed my PCA thirty-two class and I still have my class. And I'm allowed to shoot as long as you guys allow me to.
And do individual property owners have to sign consents also?
Yeah, every, every homeowner has to sign a consent for me.
All the consents we had before for him, do they have to be redone now he's a private entity or, because I know huge number of.
It has to be redone because he stands with me.
So all of those consents have. So all of those consents have to be resigned. So again, there'll be a consent for trapping and a consent for shooting. I understand now you use only air rifles, not standard, so the range is much decreased, lethal range is...
Right, the air rifles have a lot of powers, but they don't go that far. And they're really expensive rifle. Rifle costs $1,500 when a regular firearm costs $300. But it, for me, is best to use air rifle.
So would our contract include shooting if the individual residents...
If you guys, that's what you wanted.
Trapping and shooting, based on people's silence.
I have traps set and when I go to the property to check the traps, the coyote's there without buying the trap. So I was able to shoot him because he was right in the trap.
I think if you trap one and someone has not consented to shooting on their property, what do you do with the animal?
I have to shoot him.
You have to, right?
I have to shoot.
Because it will attack you.
Right.
So you still do it if it's illegal? But the shooting consent is for shooting, not just trapped animals, shooting individuals.
I have to have a consent for the city to shoot the city. And for homeowners to shoot on their property. So it has to be two consents.
And we have all that paperwork that you need?
Yeah, well, we'd have to get the new consent forms, but our municipal code allows for, there is an exception that if it is to destroy or...
Correct, yes, so the, like, there are all, like, many jurisdictions, there's a prohibition on the discharge of firearms, but ours, ours does have an exception to destroy or kill any predatory or dangerous animal. Seems to be right in line.
Can I say an air rifle, is it different than a standard firearm?
Yeah, you're probably right. I believe this code was adopted decades ago, so, and so, you know, if there's been changes, but...
So, sorry, is, so we can discharge an air rifle in this city, shoot a coyote, and it's not illegal in LA County?
I have a trapping license.
I'm just...
It's accompanied with a...
No, no, I appreciate what you have. I'm just saying, standing in my yard, if I have $1,500...
Maybe you should ask him not to...
I was just sidetracked.
So this is interesting because, so this is interesting because it has come up in other agencies or having worked for PVE and RPV, something such as that you can't, only because of the close proximity to another neighbor, right? To your neighbor. I'm doing research for the city of Rolling Hills. It may differ only because you have much larger properties, correct? But you still need to have consent from those neighbors that are around you to do such acts. So I will let the city attorney respond.
And so, you know, of course, it would be my formal position that, that be the method of last resort, that we had now potentially have Fernando here in the mix, a trained professional, who knows what he's doing. But of course, I would similarly not say that if a, any predatory animal is attacking someone, that you're not, you know, I'm not going to say, no, it is illegal to discharge your firearm in the protection of, you know, life.
Your air rifle.
Air rifle, right.
Okay, well, we're going to ask this question later differently. Okay, because...
My opinion is that you can discharge and you can kill a coyote if it's attacking a family member or your pet.
Yeah, it's predatory.
And in that case, they're allowed to do it.
I get that, you can shoot with anything at that point in time. I'm saying is if discharging an air rifle in this city, which is in LA County, is not illegal, and shooting vermin, which a coyote is, is not illegal.
Correct, so what's the problem? It's not enough to do.
So I think the big thing here is we got to sign, and then everyone else, because I've had a sign thing forever, and now mine's no good, so we got to sign that as well.
Well, you only need the people to sign that are going to engage.
Well, but if my neighbor's doing it, I want to pre-sign it so make sure they're cool as well.
Okay, can I ask a question? Fernando, you have put in your bid that there's long-term trapping schedules. So if we want a more long-term trapping, and which would include shooting, what would that entail? Because, you know, we obviously have a continual problem, this is not going away.
The long term means what happened, trapping, setting the trap, that doesn't mean you're going to catch that animal or those animals. So two weeks is the max that we trappers have for catching. In two weeks, that coyote should be passing by then again. So if that doesn't happen, and then the problem continue, we can't continue trapping for one more week or two more week or three more weeks. Until we got, if the animal is creating problem in the area, then we need to get out of animal. But it will take longer.
Okay, so if we're wanting you to be available and we have a longer contract for you to handle whatever is going on in the city, what would that cost us?
The problem with that is that we cannot completely eradicate coyotes. We cannot just trap coyotes just because we want to get them out of here. That, that, first of all, doesn't work. And second, we can have CEQA behind us, why are you killing so many coyotes in that area? So that's where we are focused and get the coyotes that are creating problems. And then usually what happened, once you get one or two coyotes out of the area, they move on, they move to another area. That doesn't mean they're coming back, they will come back. You know, this area will always have coyotes, it doesn't matter what you do. We just want to get those coyotes that are aggressive and problematic coyotes out of here because eventually, one of the main issues that we have here is people feeding coyotes. And then when that happened, the sense of the human is in that food, so now they associate human with their food source. And then when that happened, the coyote's going to be coming closer and closer to human. This program with the county started 30 years ago with the little girl was killing Glendale by coyotes. She was three years old. The neighbor was feeding coyotes. And what happened, the neighbor came, the coyotes came to look for the food that wasn't there. The little girl was in the backyard playing by herself. And it just happened two years ago, happened in Dallas, Texas, the same thing. Neighbor was feeding coyotes, the coyote came and killed a boy. So this is a prevention work that we do just to prevent something to happen. And the coyotes start usually with little pets. You know, they kill dogs not because they're hungry, because they're territorial. That's one of the reasons why it's illegal to relocate coyotes because it's a death sentence. When you take coyotes to another area, those coyotes are going to be killed by other coyotes. Second of all, is the coyote's a problem here, now it's a problem there. And the third reason is, if the coyote have any disease here, now you're taking that disease in another area. So the trap that I use are humane and they're authorized by Fish and Wildlife. Those traps are to catch the animals, not to kill. And if I get, I got, check my trap at 5:30 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning before the sun come up, they're checking my traps. I don't want that animal to be there for a longer time than they need to be there, and I don't want anybody to pass by and see their animal. So not every house is good for trapping. So I go to many properties, I say, I'm not going to set a trap here. You know, the backyard is too short, if everybody pass by, or people pass by the trail with dogs and horses, I can't trap in those scenarios. The only trap that I will be able, that I will use there would be cages. And coyotes are really reluctant to go in cages. It's really hard to catch a coyote in a cage.
Okay, so for a long-term situation, I'm just trying to get an idea. If we want to have you on tap for a year to do whatever is needed for, as you've been doing, what would that cost?
I don't have a yearly yet. I have this weekly, five days a week, or two days a week. We can discuss in the future if that's necessary and get to that. But again, it's never been done. And it's really, you're going to have laws that coming against you to why you want to be continued trapping if the problematic coyotes are removed.
I mean, I think the CEQA, you're saying that the CEQA concern is if we're, why would we be talking about a year-long contract if this is an emergency situation, we got the danger? The work that they would do would hopefully control the amounts that we have, and so we would be avoiding a CEQA concern of an ongoing, I think what we're trying to do is avoid, from my understanding, is avoiding the look, the appearance of a long-term thing.
And remember, the next order right now, when I catch coyote and I drop in with the coyote, my truck, hey, congratulations, coyote. How you know? I just got it. So it's a lot of communication with that, that you don't want that to go out.
Right.
And I know we need to go to public.
Yeah, but I just want to kind of follow up on that CEQA issue that it's not necessarily that you cannot do it because CEQA quote-unquote prohibits. What it, what it does do is requires a lot more study, a lot more analysis, and a lot more of a rigid program. The environmental findings as drafted before you tonight, as Madam Mayor highlighted, yes, one of them does rely upon the limited temporal nature of this. It is a six-month thing. Staff will study, we will work with the consultant, should you guys decide to hire him, and monitor, see, hey, are we getting 50 calls a month? Do we get two or three and then it goes quiet? I mean, once again, that's the best-case scenario, probably won't. But so if the, if the desire is for a longer term, I would advise that you give us that direction and we can come back. But just changing the contract tonight to a two-year or three-year, in my opinion, would be inadvisable. Not that we're going to kick them out after six months, but just give us this six-month trial period, and then we can, we can come back.
And Madam Mayor, if I may add to the city attorney's explanation of the environmental review, there's another component that the city, I would recommend, create is a coyote management plan. The city of Rolling Hills does not have one, and it really goes into detail of how the coyote abatement works within a structure. That way, you're still, we still have to do, you know, the CEQA compliance. The city will have to do this, should we continue. But also, it allows us an avenue to really have something that specifies how we're going to do this moving forward. And it's approved, it'll be approved under the CEQA grounds, could potentially do that. But the other three agencies on the peninsula have it. Now, I know the last time we met, someone mentioned that the city of Torrance has this dashboard. So does the peninsula. The Rolling Hills community does not participate in it. It hasn't participated in it for a while, and it started back in 2018. That is something that should the council decide to do this beyond a six-month period, more than happy to present that to you to see what that looks like. But it's quite robust, and it documents all the sightings and it tracks when the coyote has an aggressive behavior and/or if there's additional issues that are concerning the environment. So these are all factors that will follow after the six-month period expires.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
So Fernando, you mentioned that a problem is people feeding coyotes. Do you know within our city where this is happening?
I don't have proofs.
No, that's not what I asked.
That's the problem. But it was a big problem before in Possum and Crest Road. I mean, that was a huge problem. Now, in the past, I, two weeks ago, I was coming and I saw two coyotes in the front yard of somebody and crashed on his field. And that person came really aggressive to me, he was really mad because I don't know how he found out, I was just coming with the coyotes that I just got. And then the coyotes were there really peacefully in the front yard. And I stopped to take a picture of the coyote, and then the guy come out and he was, the coyotes left. And for what I understand is those coyotes was eating in the front yard. I mean, I didn't see that. But I mean, what is the reason those coyotes were there without moving? And as soon as this person come out, the coyotes took off.
And I will say after that occurred, Fernando brought it to the staff attention, and we sent out code enforcement to just do a follow-up to see if in fact what was going on. But it seemed as if we were told they were feeding their pets, their cats, and such. So again, we don't have any proof of them actually feeding the coyotes, but when asked and approached that someone had indicated that such, something like that was happening, they indicated they were feeding their outdoor cats.
Well, there's a lot of people opposed to coyote management, and I understand that. But the ones that go too far and feed, and it's not just coyotes, it's any wildlife, raccoons, whatever, that's all illegal. But when they, when they cross the line and feed them, they're exacerbating the same problem that they're...
Exactly.
Opposed to preventing. So it's, I would encourage you to report.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, if I see the animals eating the property, you know, I'd report it.
And I assume that it happens by accident sometimes, people leave food up for their pets. But I think these days, most people realize you can't leave pets out, you can't leave food out. I mean, you'd have to be extremely...
That's why we believe that the location is going to create a big impact in that as long as the people want to do. Because sometimes you go and tell them, don't do it because this and this and this, and they say, I don't care, I'm going to continue doing it.
Well, and that's what we need to know about.
When I was working for the county, we are not law enforcement, we had to call Fish and Wildlife and they'll take care of it.
But in this case, you could call the city.
Right, right, you have ordinance and go in for it.
Code, and that's what we, on that grounds, I was able to send code enforcement.
So I know we've talked about coyotes, and that's what we've discussed before with the residents. If in the future you develop a ground squirrel management program, could you let us know about that? If you're interested in doing that as well?
Yeah, I'm planning on doing some of that too.
Okay, yeah, let us know. Okay. No, that was it. I just, I know that that's another issue with a lot of residents.
So I do have a question. So for the, I mean, you kind of said that you weren't sure if $10,000 would be enough or something, but what do you envision for six months that you would be doing for, and what, based on what you've done in our city before? Because you're very familiar with Rolling Hills. How far do you think this $10,000 would go for doing what you used to do?
When I was working for the county, before the board supervisor mandated we have to be here 24, I mean, every day, we had a contract with you guys. The problem was that they couldn't send us because there was not enough people. So we never used the $25,000 because sometime Rolling Hills called and I was coming a month later to find out what happened. Because in that time, we don't have enough people to do that. But since I was here with the board supervisor, then there was no charge because the board supervisor was paying for more of that. So, but I know that we never used the $25,000 in the county. Now, I talked to a code enforcement in Rancho Palos Verdes, and I think they have $120,000 per coyote control there. I don't know what kind of scenario they have over there. I don't know what happened, but they spent a lot of money there. And Torrance spent a lot of money with the program that they have, and it didn't work because it doesn't work. You start killing coyotes, killing, killing, it doesn't want to work. You know, those coyotes, they learn the bad behavior for some coyotes, and then when you take those coyotes away, the other one don't continue doing that behavior. And then you stop that. But feeding and attracting the animals to the city by leaving the dogs out, the pets out, the cats out, you know, that's why they're here. They have so many land where to live here. They're happy here. So we just need to keep those coyotes away in line. And the only way to do that is trapping and killing them. We cannot relocate them, it's illegal.
Okay.
Thank you, Fernando. I'd like to open to public, Mr. Darrell or Ms. Darrell? Darcy, you want to come in?
Fernando, she's going to sit here and then we'll call you up.
Fernando. My husband and I, we hired Fernando, and so he was at our house two weeks ago, and... Oh, I'm Darcy Darrell. I'm at 16 Chuck Wagon. And it's my husband, and we thought we would come and try and convince everyone there's a coyote problem. And I guess we don't need to do that. Very friendly audience here. But we can just, we'll just speak really quickly. We've had a very positive experience with Fernando. He's wonderful, it sounds like you all know that. The first night he came, he caught two coyotes. That was about two weeks ago, and then he had to stop because of the rain. But very professional, I mean, it was, you know, he caught them. There was really like no issue. I mean, he just, in the morning, he came and he retrieved them. So it was just, as far as him working in the neighborhood, I can't imagine a better, more professional coyote trapper. Never worked with a coyote trapper before, but it's been a, you know, very pleasant experience. We actually got involved with this because one of our neighbors reached out to us and said, you know, hey, there's a coyote problem, and we need to do something as a neighborhood on Chuck Wagon and Chesterfield. And she started contacting other neighbors, and there's actually now 11 families on our street that all pitched in and said, you know, we don't want traps on our yard, but we want you to have traps. And now we said, great, you know, because we have a four-year-old. And then after, you know, so we got this pool of money to hire Fernando, and then everyone started, and I got the text chain going, and then every, a lot of other people want traps. And then everyone started sending me their coyote sightings. And now I think we kind of didn't want to be involved in this. We, you know, we wanted someone else to be here doing all this, and we wanted to be home watching Netflix. But here we are. We're happy to be doing it, and thank you for all your time. I think the coyote management plan is a wonderful idea. I saw Torrance's website, and I know it looks like they just trap during the breeding season, which I think is just kind of like a nice way to time-limit it. That makes sense to me. I'm sure you guys have, will have wonderful ideas on how to manage it. So I'm so glad that the city's doing something because it's really, you know, it's just got, I mean, we're happy to live with coyotes, but the last few months, I'm sure everyone's managed, has seen that it's just gotten out of control.
Yeah, we constantly have packs of three to seven coyotes, the most, I mean, running down the middle of our road, right? And people are walking dogs, they're seeing them. And so as we got more involved, everybody was telling us all these stories. And so we had our traps, and then traps for another property, and there are going to be some more. And as you said, kind of everybody band together as a neighborhood, which is really great to see. Now, some people were opposed to it. Now, some people were opposed to it. And we just agreed, you know, it was very friendly and everybody says different views. So that was nice to see. We could have different, different views without everybody, you know, throwing a food fight. But, um, so we just all kind of agreed, okay, you know, this is what we're gonna do. And people didn't wanna contribute, they didn't contribute. Uh, I will tell you, um, about Fernando. So I I work out on my patio every morning. And so I saw him come for four straight days before the rain. So he set the traps. He'd come very early in the morning and I'd be out there. And he he was very quiet and, uh, professional, diligent and incredibly discreet. Um, because I was out there and I actually, you know, kind of watched him do his trade, you know, from afar. And the way he did was, I mean, it's 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 a tough job. Um, but he was very discreet about it, very professional. And that was right on our property, I mean, a hundred yards, you know, probably a hundred feet from, a hundred fifty feet probably from our patio door, where I saw three coyotes scamper across my pi- uh, my patio as I was drinking coffee the couple nights, days before. Um, so I do think you guys all know Fernando. For somebody who hadn't had much interaction with him, I think he's the right guy to do it. I mean, we spent a thousand dollars, another family a thousand dollars. You got two coyotes, maybe we'll get some more. I kind of think of ten thousand dollars doesn't sound like a whole lot for, you know, the the twenty-some coyotes that pass through Chuck Wagon and Chesterfield every, uh, um, every day. But, uh, he's a very, he seems like a very honest guy, is an honest guy. He doesn't wanna, he wants to do what he thinks he can do. And that's exactly the conversation we had with him. He didn't wanna overcharge us. He said, this is what I think I can do. And that was the price. So, um, you know, we've had long reviews, at least from a, from a resident. And I do think we need to continue with all this good work everybody here in this room is doing.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for all your work.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing your experience with Fernando. Thank you. And and your neighbors too, for all your opinion. And that's, that's how, that's how it's gonna work. I mean, it's gonna take the city and the neighbors and residents and it's gonna be a, a community project, so.
We were surprised how open people, I mean, it was a big enough problem that people wanted to contribute.
They started coming in packs now. Before, we used to see them, as you and I discussed, onesies, twosies. And now they're threesies, foursies.
Yeah. Maybe you could turn that, a trading website thing into the coyote.
And our four-year-old thinks you too, because that's got us involved because we're nervous about her just playing in the yard. So that's, you know, that's, we love our pets too, but it's the four-year-old.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from public? Here again.
Melissa.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I just had a couple of questions. I maybe didn't hear all the details, but I had a couple of questions that he is carrying a gun, but it's an air rifle. Is that correct? Because I know it was different before. Um, and then also, um, how many clients do you currently have inside the city?
Do we wanna, yeah, hang on, I think we should, and so. No, no, I mean, you can ask the question, we don't want, and then at the end, if the council wants to bring him up to answer, I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay, so save the question.
Questions, right.
Save the question.
Yeah, yeah.
And never listen to the question and bring me back up to answer the question instead of going back and forth. We have that for the record.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I wanted to know how many clients, Mr., um, how many he has currently in the city? Um, and then I also wanted to ask, I was a little concerned. It sounded like there was maybe some hearsay involved in some of his, um, current work or maybe some previous work. There was some hearsay. And I was concerned about, you know, if if things are, if he's seeing things that kind of look like being fed or kind of look like this, but he doesn't have proof, which I thought he acknowledged. And then there's calls coming in that if he is under contract, that wouldn't proof be required instead of just hearsay. Um, so I was concerned about that. Um, and then also, um, would the contract include any sort of, um, data capture, data management, you know, specifics about, you know, where, how many, you know, what, et cetera, et cetera, for the whole period of the contract?
Any other questions for me? That's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I did have a question.
Well, if it's, if it's okay. Is your question going to be for Mr. Barrera?
No.
All right, so Fernando, if you would come back up, please. Thank you.
Okay, the first question was about the rifle. It is an air rifle. You know, it is, uh, being approved for use to euthanize humanly animal in the trap. The other question was the data, how many clients we'll have in the city so far? One, two, three, four? It's about six residents that have been trapping.
Six, thank you, about, about.
And remember, I start trapping in November.
Right.
So short-term, it's a period. And the other question was the data. I'm only authorized to tell the homeowners how many I got in their property, if there are the one that pay me. But if they're working for the city, then I'll tell the city how many I'm getting.
If the homeowner chooses to share with us, like I'd had a discussion with Darrells and he mentioned to me how that they, that you caught some. If, is that okay? If the homeowner chooses to share with us.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Now, if, now if the city want to know, I'll tell you.
But just like you did before, you would provide information to us when you were working for the county, that's what you did. So you would continue to provide that information to us on the ones that you were billing to the city. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can I, can I talk about the hearsay that Melissa, um, mentioned? So I I understand that you didn't have any proof. And I said, well, you don't need it. But, uh, just to be clear, you could report it to the city as any resident could report a suspicion of illegal activity. The city would then investigate it, right? I mean, that that would be the process. So we're not, we're not condemning anybody. It's simply reporting like, uh, I suppose, a, a dangerous dog, you know? It would get reported in the city, code enforcement or whoever we contract with would then investigate. So I, you know, I am, I'm not suggesting that just because you suspect or anybody does, you know, that it's gonna result in anything other than an investigation.
Thank you, Fernando. Mr. Disco.
Couple things real, real quick. Yeah, Alfred Disco, fifteenth century. Think you need more money. Since you're not gonna be utilizing the county for this service, the twenty-five thousand that you set aside for the county, let them do their free stuff like Jeff said. Put twenty-five thousand into the pot for, for this six-month. And hopefully you won't, you won't use it, but you've allocated it and that takes care of that issue. Second issue is this feeding of wildlife, whether it's a coyote or whatever. This brings up a, uh, an occurring point that I feel is necessary. Certain things should not be complaint-driven. As I've said before, the, the, uh, compliance with our dead vegetation ordinance should not be complaint-driven. The no-feeding of wildlife, especially coyotes, should not be complaint-driven. You need to set up a program where on a, on a systematic basis, uh, observations can be made. I realize it's difficult because a lot of our properties are difficult to see from the roads, especially close to the house, which I would assume would be where the feeding would be occurring or not. But you you need to think this through a little more than just, if Fernando happens to see something suspicious or somebody else happens to see something suspicious, then you'll investigate. I think you need to, we need to nip this feeding coyotes in the bud. We need to stop that. Because basically, what I heard from Fernando was, he cited two incidences where people were feeding, which directly led to attacks on humans. That's two too many, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
And I'm sure there'll be, uh, when we develop the coyote management plan, all of these things will be considered. Karen, no other public comment or post-public comment?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, um, propose or make a motion that we, uh, have a professional agreement with wildlife specialists and consultant for additional coyote education and services. Um, I would actually increase the not-to-exceed amount to twelve thousand five hundred. Twenty-five thousand a year was our previous amount. That was an annual. Half of that would be twelve thousand five hundred for the first six-month trial period. And then separately, we would also, not part of the minute, we would actually, and that'd be the mayor, could instruct the staff to put, um, reminders out in the blue news letter that it's illegal to feed coy- coyotes. Not everybody knows that. And if we put reminders periodically in a month or so that it's illegal to file, feed coyotes, I guess that would.
And the other animals.
Yep.
I mean, it's mostly coyotes. Who cares if they're heat-stoled?
I do have a point of clarification, if I, if I may, Madam Mayor. Um, if I heard correctly, I know, uh, Mayor President Piper mentioned to, alluded to this, that I'll continue to utilize the county for the educational component of it and utilizing, um, Mr. Fernando for the abatement component.
If you rid of education, it's worthless anyways.
But does Fernando, doesn't he have to do some element of education?
It's part of the, the. I just see it as an overall policy. We use the different pieces for the different pieces. I think we can get away with that as a concept.
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, I have no problem with what you just said. Except for, we already have six people who are paying on their own. And my concern is, if I'm one of those six people, I'm not gonna be like, hey, let the city pay for it. So not, everyone's going to, which is, the goal is to get more of this spread out. So just, okay, I'm fine. I just.
Hey, I, if you were gonna up the number, I'd have gone with it as an amendment. But you wanna decrease the number?
No, no, I was gonna leave the dollar. Okay. What I was gonna say is that, that we just supplement half of it. You know, half the dollars that residents pay out.
Maybe when it comes back, after, after a while, the trial.
After we spend all the money in three months, then we'll discuss how we do it.
And, and, and so if I, Madam Mayor, I just wanna be sure that that, but the the twelve thousand five hundred, should it be adopted? That is only prospective. So there won't be any, if neighbors of residents have already spent money.
That's, they're, that's.
Got it, just wanna be sure, yes. Spending for, prospectively for, services in the future, got it.
And it's our abatement services.
I'll second it.
And it's abatement, right. I agree, we can get rid of education, but there is an education component. But it's, yeah. But we can leave the word education, it doesn't matter.
If you, if it's not, if it's not, it's not used, it's not.
I'll second it.
Let's take a roll call, block done on this.
Sure thing. Okay. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Derringer.
Yes.
Mayor President Piper.
Yes.
Mayor Brach.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Fernando.
Okay. Thank you, Fernando. Thank you.
Okay, so then we'll work with you to draft and agree.
Good thing, yep. Our standard, yeah, yes, eh.
Okay, but I wanna make sure that he said he's not gonna kill.
Case number twenty-two ninety-one. For a two-hundred-sixty-four square foot covered patio and outdoor kitchen, a conditional use permit for the use of such a structure and a varied request to construct from the front yard and wave the requirement for stable and for outside area. At one Chestnut.
Mayor Mash, Mayor of the City Council. The item for you tonight is a project located at one Chestnut Lane. It's zoning case number twenty-two dash ninety-one. The project location is located on the west side of the city of Rolling Hills, as shown in the map. It's off of Johns County Road. The close-up here shows a thousand-foot radius. Um, residents or owners, um, within a thousand feet were, um, notified at the planning, planning commission public hearing on this item. Uh, that was also published in the Daily Breeze. This shows a aerial of the, of subject property located right there in the center. And you can see some of the neighboring houses around the area. Um, the proposed structure is located around this area here. It is a covered patio. Um, it covers the, an outdoor kitchen. Um, I believe in the plans, it actually calls it as a gazebo. They're at, they're one and the same. Um, sorry for introducing.
They call it, yeah.
Yeah, but there is, it is an upper, um, structure located in that area. Um, the closest structure to that is probably neighbor up here, which is, um, right above. And it looks like there's an accessory structure up there, probably a, um, a barn or an A D U. Uh, this shows a vicinity map from where that proposed structure is located. Um, the residence, uh, in the back, which is up slope, sort of is at about two-hundred-seventy-six feet. Um, you go uphill this way, that neighbor is about two-hundred-seventy feet from the proposed structure. And then you have other neighbors that are across the street from Chestnut, which is two forty-three. And properties to the, uh, west are three eighteen and three fifty-one. So the property is owned R A S two, residential agriculture, um, minimum two acres per unit. The property is two point eight, two point three acres approximately. Building pad is twelve thousand three hundred thirty square feet. There's only one building pad on the property. Uh, on that building pad, there's an existing four thousand two hundred thirty-two square-foot single-family residence, which was built in nineteen seventy-three. Also, on that building pad, there's a detached garage, storage, which is attached to the garage, a swimming pool, some pool equipment and a service yard. The application is for a site planning review for that two-hundred-sixty-four square foot covered patio and outdoor kitchen. There's also a conditional use permit for the use of the structures and variance requests to construct in the front yard and waive the set-aside requirement for the barn and corral. On January sixteenth of this year, the planning commission held a field trip at the site and also an evening meeting afterwards. At the field trip, there were two participants, the property owner, Alarca Nguyen, and also, uh, Mr. James Eichley. Um, although there were participants, there were no comments made at that field trip. We also did not have a quorum for the planning commission. Um, there were two commissioners there, but they were able to, we were still able to walk the site and, uh, you know, understand the project better. No decisions were made at the field trip. At the evening meeting, there was one participant there, Mr. Alfred Disco, and his, he made a comment in regards to the open fire. The area is a high-fire-risk area. Vice Chair Kirk, Kirk Patrick explained that it's not under the purview to review the open fire. Um, planning commission's responsibility is for reviewing location and coverage. Um, at that public hearing, the commission was concerned with waiving the barn set-aside. Um, we did, again, be, was able to see the site during the field trip. The commissioner that wasn't there, Commissioner Cardenas, was able to go on his own. Um, he was at the, the evening meeting. So we did have a quorum there when we discussed the project and they made a decision. Uh, they discussed that the property has steep slopes and it's not an ideal location for a barn. So they were comfortable approving the variance to waive the set-aside area. This shows a development table. The first column right over there shows the existing single-family residence with all the, the existing structures on there. The column in the middle is for the proposed two-hundred-sixty-four square foot for the covered patio and outdoor kitchen. And the right column shows a total with everything being proposed, uh, proposed and existing. In terms of structural coverage, the proposed structure, the outdoor kitchen and covered patio is about point three percent of an increase to the structural coverage. So the total comes up to five point seven, which is under the twenty percent maximum for structural coverage allowed by code. In terms of the total lot coverage, which is for structural flatwork, the maximum the code allows is thirty-five percent. The proposed with the, uh, the total there with the proposed structure is twenty-three point four percent. So it's under that maximum. And in terms of disturbed area, we allow forty percent maximum. There's no change in disturbance because the structure is already in an area that's disturbed. And that disturbance area is a twenty-six point three percent. There's no grading involved. Again, that, it's, it's already in an, uh, in a, an area that's disturbed. And I forgot to mention, this is actually an as-built structure, it was reported to code enforcement, that's why it's before us tonight. And it was reported, I guess, to us by a neighbor, we had to go out there and be reactive in our, in our code enforcement. They were giving a stop-work notice, they had to, to come in with plans, they submitted plans. That structure is located right there in the yellow or orange. The top line there, the orange line, shows the location of the public right-of-way, or not public right-of-way, I'm sorry, the roadway easement. The red there, that's dash, shows the property line. And the green there shows the setback requirements. The one closest to the street is your front yard setback, the one farthest away is your rear yard setback, and the two on the sides are your side yard setback. So you can see the proposed structure is outside of all the setback requirements. However, our code does call out for a front yard, and that front yard is considered anything within the leading edge of the proposed residence forward. So that blue line sort of shows that where that front yard is located, and as you can see, the, the structure is located in that front yard area. So a variance is required to be located in the front yard. A close-up would show you that the front yard setback there is fifty feet from the roadway easement. The leading edge of the residence is a hundred-and-seven feet from the, the roadway easement, and so that establishes your front yard. And you can see that the structure in question is at ninety-six feet, so it does encroach into the front yard. I mentioned that it is an as-built structure, if you look at the aerials in twenty-nineteen, you can see that there is no covered patio there. It looks like there might be a patio area there, maybe a fire pit, but there is something already there, and it's already disturbed and graded. If you look at the aerials from twenty-twenty-three, you can see the, the existing covered patio in that location. And if you look at some aerials from twenty-twenty-one, kind of same thing in February of twenty-twenty-one, there's really nothing there. But when you look at the aerials from November, you can see the, the roof line of the covered patio. So this structure can be deduced to be constructed sometime in twenty-twenty-one. These are a couple photos of the structure when it was there, it's actually since been demolished. And they were issued a permit in order to demolish that structure, the, the covered patio, at least. The outdoor kitchen, the portion below there remained, and so that's actually still there now. The applicant does wish to rebuild the covering, covered patio portion. The reason why they demolished it is because it doesn't meet R H C A requirements. For one, the columns are too narrow, they're not as large as R H C A requires them to be. Also, the roof pitch is too flat, and it's tough to judge from this photo, but it looks like to be about a, a two-to-twelve riser or run pitch on that roof. If you compare what they had before to the proposed plans, you can kind of see that on that north elevation, they're showing a four-to-twelve pitch. So it's, it's a lot steeper pitch as required by R H C A, and the posts that they're proposing are also thicker. Material-wise also, they'll have to meet the materials and colors that R H C A requires them to have. This shows a plan of the structure. The, the dash line there shows the outline of the roof, and below that you have the grill, a sink, and refrigerator for the outdoor kitchen. In terms of the environmental review, we find that the, this is exempt from the requirements of the California Voluntary Equality Act, pursuant to session one-five-three-zero-three, class three, it's for an accessory structure to a single-family residence. And our recommendation is that the city council receive and file the planning commission's decision to adopt resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-one, approving the proposed project for the outdoor kitchen and covered patio. And that completes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, John, any questions from council?
I have a question, I just wanna make sure I'm correct, am I thinking it was the community association that made them remove that structure, not the city? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just wanna make sure.
Any other questions from council before we open to public?
Um, we're doing, yes, just going, we're doing some kind of requirement because it's an as-built structure, they have to pay this penalty, correct?
There is a penalty in our, in our ordinance for that. I wanna say this kind of actually came in when I, you know, came on board, so I'd have to go check the file, see if they actually collected the fees, but.
Well, is that gonna take place?
We, yeah, we can charge them the fees required by our ordinance.
Cause I, I think that's the least, I mean, as far as that goes, it seems to be pretty rampant that people are just doing as-bills. And so, the very least, we need to be good on the, on charging extra fees so that people aren't further encouraged to do it if there's no consequence.
Right, but so I, I just wanna be clear for the record that the, the fees, any additional fee that is basically just a repay for staff time in order to investigate and go, we cannot treat those fees as punitive fines as a revenue-generating mechanism. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, does that mean there's an established amount? I didn't hear a dollar amount that we're talking about here.
There is an established amount in our, in our ordinance. I would have to give the.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking it up right now, and maybe, you may have to give me a few minutes there, councilmember, thank you.
But the, I guess the code enforcement case was opened back in July of twenty-twenty-one, it's on the aerial. It looks like that's when, about the time the structure was built, early twenty-twenty-one.
It's under hot penalties. Code enforcement action, but it was the association that required the demo, I'm a little confused about who was asserting jurisdiction.
Well, we would've went to the resident and told them they either needed to demolish the structure or submit for a permit. And they eventually did submit for a permit, and we processed that permit, that's why we went for the planning commission. They actually pulled back because they, they said they wanted to demolish the entire structure. And so, when they went to go demolish the structure, they only demolished the covered patio portion and not the outdoor kitchen. So they still had the outdoor kitchen there, in the meantime, they were actually putting like a canopy or a tarp covering that barbecue area, which actually looked worse than the structure that was there before. So we had told them, you, you, you can only just demolish the covered patio, you also need to demolish the outdoor kitchen. And so they decided they wanted to keep the structure, and they wanted to proceed with the application, and that's what we did.
While we're looking that up, any other questions? So I'll close the, for right now, open any questions from the comments from the public?
Yeah. Well, as you recall, this is one of these items I presented concerning, uh, proliferation of outdoor kitchens, fire pits, what have you, I brought up several items that I brought up in the manual. I don't wanna make things hard for these people, we've gone through more than enough to, to try to legalize what was built there without permission. What I found this concerning was the comments that were made at the planning commission that said the outdoor, outdoor kitchens were not within their, end of their, their review, that all they cared about was covering.
Maybe it's established, but the resolution or fee reservation.
Was that John stated here, it's one, I, I was given the impression that the fact that this was an outdoor kitchen, which might, might not create additional fire hazards, was not within their, end of their, their review. So who is, who, who, who has this review responsibility? If there isn't, that's my question, and, you know, obviously, it'd be much better that, but very much more recovered than just sitting out there, that's obviously, I, I don't really know how much of a flame is generated in this particular outdoor kitchen, or any of the outdoor kitchens, or fire pits, or whatever you wanna call them. This seems to me that the city should be addressing this issue and see whether or not this is something that needs more oversight than currently what's going on. I know the association's coming back with their final plans on, I think they're creating, I'm not sure if it's in the court. And I also noticed they still, on their whiteboard, the association's annual meeting still showed this big giant fire pit, which, you know, at the time they first came to the city, there was some indication that that would probably not be a great idea. So, again, I think this is something that really needs to be looked at and figured out exactly what, if anything, could be done concerning these locations and exactly what's being, what kind of flames being generated there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bisco. Any, any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll close.
I'd make a wish to receive and file.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you very much, don't move. And if I just make one comment, the issue about the fire, the council has meetings with the planning commission, and I've had that on my notes, it begins to, with the platinum, to find out what county requirements are and so forth.
Would the association have?
And to find out what they, what they have, I, I don't know what they have. If there were county requirements, of course, we'd have heard.
Fire department, I mean, I have an outdoor kitchen, it's all built by fire and county requirements, everybody does.
Okay, so moving on to the next, so we did, the major can be consideration and possible action to proceed with IRS code section one-seventy-C-dash-one for charitable contributions. If you wanna start off.
Sure. Of course.
I'll sweep up.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we're going to hear a little bit about the potential of creating or establishing a program that allows for committee members to contribute towards city projects that are going to be utilized for public, public use. The ad hoc committee was created and approved and established by the city council to include Mayor Leah Mersch and Councilmember Patrick Wilson. The ad hoc committee has done a significant amount of research on whether or not to utilize a five-oh-one-C to receive charitable contributions, or, which has now come to the realization of a potential one-seventy-C-one. Before I go into the specifics, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on over to Madam Mayor Mersch, so she can talk a little bit about both the five-oh-one-C and, but why we wanna focus predominantly on the one-seventy-C-one.
Thank you very much, staff, thank you for the staff report. Pat jumped in anytime, and you can step on my toes like I did on yours at the last one for these that we had.
Don't even think about it.
Several months ago, we started looking, as you may recall, into establishing what would be involved to establish a five-oh-one-C-three charitable foundation for members of the public to make donations for things. So, turns out, it was very expensive, a lot of administrative work, could, would be combined with P V E, all, all kinds of things. So a lot of work was done into it. In the meantime, while we were looking into this, it turns out, because all the other cities were doing a five-oh-one-C-three, we thought that we had to, because if there was another mechanism, why would they be doing five-oh-one-C-threes? Well, it turns out, there's been a long-established mechanism, we don't even have to adopt it, it's just we have to decide if we want to, you know, use it, encourage it, whatever, but you can, there is IRS code one-seventy-C-one, which allows tax-advantage donations to be made to the city if it's being, if the funds are going to be used for, and I let me get my specific wording here, it's very specific wording, but basically, to not benefit.
Correct, it's for exclusively public purposes, Madam Mayor.
To not benefit any, any specific members of the public. I can give you some examples of what would qualify, what wouldn't qualify, but bottom line is, after spending all this time on this, I think that Pat and I would recommend that we stop considering a five-oh-one-C-three. Why, why would we reinvent the wheel and go with using something that's already in place that other cities use for this purpose? Now, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't have to develop administrative things for us to handle this because it isn't something that we have done in the past. And we would like to be directed to work with staff to develop these administrative procedures for accepting the monies, tracking them, and setting up timelines and so forth to, you know, we don't wanna be holding monies for two, three, four years around it. So there's a lot, there's some administrative, administrative stuff, but it, it could all be developed quite, quite easily. And I just think that Pat agreed that we just don't want to reinvent the wheel. There's a mechanism already there, Palm Springs has used it, they funded a dog park, they do all, all kinds of things. I asked a couple of other cities that did have five-oh-one-C-threes why they went to all the trouble and expense to do that when they had a one this available to them. The five-oh-one-C-three, first of all, people are used to hearing that term. Oh, yeah, we, we're a tax-deductible five-oh-one-C-three. It's easier sometimes people felt, to get people to develop, to contribute to a quote-unquote charitable organization, number one. Number two, there's a little bit more flexibility to it. A five-oh-one-C-three, depending on how you wanna set up what your structure, how you wanna do that, can do a lot of other things. One-seventy is only for public purposes. And, so there, that's, that's the, the major difference, you know, if, if you wanted to be going out and doing big drives for something, you might wanna consider that, but at this point, I don't really see that the city is doing that. And those types of things might be the things that wouldn't to, totally be under just for public purposes, the city's, city's purposes. And if those things wanna be explored, I think that would be up to the private people involved in that type of an organization, not for us.
What's the issue with the fact that we're not a public place?
We still.
Sorry, was it directed towards me, Ms. Mersch?
Unless you know the answer.
Well, I think I know the answer, we're not, we are not a public place, but we are a, we are a municipal government, and we do conduct municipal business, so, so hang on, just, just a second. So, like, give me.
If we were going to add more to the horse rank at Hicks', I mean, I know that we lease it, but let's pretend we didn't, let's say that was our.
Let's pretend you didn't, you didn't lease it, okay.
And no one's allowed to go there unless they're us.
We, we allow visitors to attend events there.
And so, and, and so while, you, well, well, Mr. Mayor Pretend has kind of hit the nail right on the head, the, the issue, not the issue, one of the nuances with that one-seventy-C-one is you are right, the devil is in the details. In terms of where is it, what's it gonna do? And at least in, in my experience working with other jurisdictions, when we, you know, run into this issue, oftentimes, we see a donor asking for some kind of guarantee, or hey, if I don't get the tax break, you know, I want my money back. And of course, from the city's standpoint, that's a non-starter. We will comply with all of the regulations, I think we, we would provide them with our resolution accepting the gift, here's what we're gonna do with it, et cetera, et cetera. And then after kind of that, it's, it's clear that we, we don't wash our hands, cause that sounds like we're kicking them out, but we don't, we as the city don't guarantee or kind of get involved in, in, in any of that.
But, and, and what we could, what we could do, and one of the things that I would suggest, and Pat and I, Pat Wilson and I talked about this, is when you're developing your criteria, what you want, your administrative criteria, I would recommend that you don't accept funds for anything that the city, isn't a city project, that we aren't committed to doing. If I'm not committed, if, if the city is not committed to putting more money in something, like one of my examples that I have here is a, we wouldn't do this. I've had people come to me and say, you know, such-and-such a house is for sale, I'd like to donate money, a bunch of us would like to donate money, and have the city put in some money, and let's buy that house and make it a community center. Well, this board, this council, as I see it, is not ever gonna approve something like that because we would not want to have a public place, we're not gonna, we're not gonna expend public funds or approve that, approve a project like that, we recommend against it. So, I would say that we wouldn't accept money to do something like that.
Let me ask a better question, is how much, what's the upfront-ish, did it set this thing up and do this? thing up and do this, is it, because one of the places to me is, when we rip this place apart, which is a public place.
Yes, yes.
Is if we said, hey, we're selling bricks for a thousand bucks each, and we're selling the big ones for five thousand dollars, and you get to write it off on your taxes.
Yes.
People might want to put their name on it and give us the money, which might help us with what it's going to be.
Yes, yes.
So, to me, even if it doesn't go, even if later, we're not sure how to do the rest of it, I don't know what the dollars would be, I don't know whatever that makes sense, but to me, there's potential of a super beneficial to pay for something that we have no idea how we're going to pay for when we get there.
Well, and, in my opinion, again, this has to be, we would have to set up, as the city attorney said, we'd have to set our procedures up so that this would work, but that's a perfect example of what we could do, and all we're talking about setting up is administrative procedures with staff, you have to track the money that comes in, you do have to send letters out to, to the donors, just like you would if you were a 501(c)(3), and we would have to track it and so forth, but yes, it is, there is an opportunity for us. You said, but we do, we are, we do have public facilities, and this is one of them.
Do you know if, does the money I donate go against my, my SALT, my $10,000 cap on state local tax?
Again, therein lies the details, and I'm certainly not going to give you any information about that.
No, I appreciate that, but we need to have an understanding of that, because.
Because that's a lot of the thing, when people are talking about 501(c)(3)'s.
It does.
That's, that's the problem, and so, how much, to a lot of people, the, the tax advantage status is not even, because they're, they're already using it for other stuff.
But if, if the, the 171, whatever this thing is, if it goes against the, the SALT caps, then there is literally, for the majority of the city, zero benefit for donating money, and it's harder to rationalize that I'm going to write a check, and I'm not saying if we sold bricks, people would just do it anyways, I'm, I think people would, kind of thing, but if you can't take that, and it's a big deal, if you told me, hey, a brick's $5,000, and I can, I get twenty, you know, I get half that back, or 54% of it back, then it's not as cumbersome what that is, but if my, if it goes into my SALT, then, then people aren't going to, once they figure that out, no one's going to write a check for this thing. And we'd be better off making it a 503, even, even though it might be more painful. So, I think, I totally think there's a, a reason to do this, but we should understand that, even though we don't guarantee, I get that, I get that, I get that, all those parts, but we should understand what that looks like, because there's no reason to do this if no one's going to write a check for, ideally, the additional amount. Hey, I would have been okay writing a check for two grand, but I'm not going to write one for five now, because it's good, whatever that is.
Okay, well, we can look into that. I don't know the answer to that, but I also, the, the ones, the, the 170, the IRS provision is there, I mean, that isn't something, so you're just saying, the question is, you would rather do.
I, I'm saying is, if you can't, if it goes against my SALT.
Right.
Then, and if people, like, for me.
And then what do you do when SALT goes away?
Well, if, will it?
Well, it could.
I don't, well, we'll find out, but SALT right now, there's the cap on the SALT.
Right.
So, it depends on how it looks like. They gave us a workaround, so, I was, I mean, because I own a company, now my company pays all my taxes, and then we reimburse it blah, 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 right off our federal, so we still get our full on part of it, but my, my property tax alone.
Is your.
Is a million miles past the SALT.
Right.
So, I, I just think we need to understand the subtleties of that, and believe me, I was asleep during accounting, so I can't tell you one way or another on what that's going to be, but I think that's an important part before we make something that no one's going to use for the tax reasons, then just have people write a check in, don't worry about it at that point.
Okay, we can.
But I, I, one thing that Leah and Pat are kind of alluding to, we looked into it a while ago, to look at the 501(c)(3), kind of like the Pepper Tree Foundation. It's so much effort, it's so much work, it's so much, it ain't ever going to happen. So, let's not pretend it's going to be a 501(c)(3) versus this one, because don't you agree, there's no way we're going to do that. It's just way too much.
With just the thought of having audited finances every year, it's like, 25 grand, just, just.
It's just not, I, I mean, realistically, it's not going to happen.
Plus cities, plus staff members, partial staff members.
So, so, I'm sorry, so I'm totally with Jim on that, is if the, too much brain damage, let's not bother, but if this does solve that, because it's easier to do, and we think there's tax benefit for real, then, I'm totally, I'm totally for this, because I think it's going to be totally useful for us, I just don't want to do all this, and then someone's going to figure it out, then the email's going to go out, then no one's going to.
Right, it's not going to help.
No.
Okay, so, um, we're kind of, we're kind of in the.
Want to do the research.
Yeah, we're kind of in the deliberation thing here. Um, do you want to go open for public comment on this? Well, I can't, I can't acknowledge all three of them at once.
Mary, I'm going up first.
Marian's already up. It's her first time.
She sure did.
Melissa had her hand up first, but Marian got her first. Now I got her.
Sorry about that, but I just wondered, you mentioned that Palm Springs had, had done this, and interestingly enough, when David Reddy was here, and we talked a little bit about, I mean, just in passing, I heard him talk a little bit about the charitable things, and the fact that this was a private city, and at that time, he did mention, oh no, that's really, it's really no problem, because this is a private city, you can still get the charitable deduction. So, what I'm saying is, he might be a source which you can talk to about, about the, about this type of charitable contribution, whichever, whichever one works, like the 171, which I've never heard before, and he didn't say anything about it, but I'm just saying that he might be a good source to contact.
He was my source.
Yes. He was your source?
Yes, that was what started me on this. If I, if I'd heard it from, any sooner from anybody else, we wouldn't have been going down the 501, but thank you for bringing that up.
Well, thank you, you didn't mention him, so I, I wasn't aware of that.
That was where, that, that was the, the star. Thank you, Marian. Melissa. I'm very fickle, next time I might do it a different way.
I just had a question, I don't know if it's possible, but I would like, in your due diligence, to check out a group exemption underneath that 170(c)(1) umbrella, and see if group exemptions are possible.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Group exemption.
Group exemption.
So, if the umbrella organization has it, sometimes it can trickle down to other organizations underneath that.
But we're not, I mean, we can, we can check that out, but we're kind of not like an organ, we're not like an organization, we are the, the city, and it's a city function, you know, for, for public or not.
Right, government entity.
But we can check that out.
I was just curious.
It's not like a private where you've got, let's say the association has then underneath it, the women's club, or caballeros, maybe underneath that umbrella, but we will, we will check that out.
I was just curious if it was offered in that situation, because if it was, it might be interesting, and if it's not, that's fine, too.
We'll, we'll look at that, please. Thank you. Mr. Visco?
So, how does it get a bad Achilles' or, I hurt my left Achilles somehow, Alfred Visco, 15th century. When we started looking into the 501(c), there was a potential issue that there was a legal impediment, and that would somehow impact our ability to maintain our status as a quote-unquote private city. I didn't hear, I didn't see any of that in, in this summary here, so, has that gone away, so that potential legal impediment is no longer a concern, if you choose to go with the 501(c)? That's one question. Of course, I believe that was, that was brought up at certain points. The second is, and, and Leah alluded to it, I'm sure all the cities on the peninsula that have created these charitable foundations were aware of 170(c), but they chose to go with a, knowing that's still on the books.
They didn't all know.
Yeah, they probably didn't.
Really? I'm surprised. Well, I'm sure the county knows, I'm sure LA County knows, but they, they went ahead and, and formulated a foundation for the LA County Fire Department recently, which we all learned about recently. So, I'm kind of curious on why, assuming the cities and the county knew about 170(c), I find it hard to believe, but assuming they knew about it, why they chose to create, in essence, an alternative method of, of creating more funds? The third thing is, what I see here as a major objection to the 501(c) is the potential cost and administrative problems and issues trying to keep a 501(c) going. However, we have, I believe, PV Estates, if, stop me if I'm wrong, said you could tag along with them for a fee, of course, they would take something off the top of whatever money that was generated to help their additional administrative cost. So, I'm not opposed to the 170(c) concept, but it seems to me, if there is some more flexibility in the 501(c), why not go, go in with PV Estates, since they've already said, if I remember the last presentation, they've already said we could do that for some type of nominal fee, so why not look at both in parallel, and then see where we're at as we get down here? As far as the 170(c), it appears that we can earmark, because that was one question that I had, would we be able to, for example, if somebody wants to make a contribution to the city, we could earmark it apparently for a particular project, and not just have it, give it to the city, let the city do it at their discretion. So, that would be one issue that I want to make sure that you would be able to earmark. To address Jeff's point, you're going to have the same problems, whether it's a 501(c) or, or the 170(c) as whether or not what you contribute is deductible on your tax returns as a charitable deduction. So, it doesn't really, I don't think it really makes any difference on that aspect, however, there's something that people keep forgetting about. If you are taking distributions from your IRAs, such as, a lot of us have to, not a lot, some of us have to take mandatory distributions from our IRAs every year, we can direct all or portion of that to a charitable organization, so it comes off the top, it's not a charitable deduction, it's actually money that you don't have to report as part of your income. So, you can make a, you can direct your IRA to make all or part of that mandatory distribution to a charitable organization, such as the 501(c), and I would assume also the one, the 170(c) that you're contemplating. So, that's just something for future.
Thank you. If there's no one else in the audience, I'm going to assume there's no more public comment, and close that. Before we deliberate just a little more, I'd like to just say a couple of things. First of all, a slight correction, PVE did not say that we could do that. What they said is, if we were interested, they would explore to see if they could do it. There's no flex, that, that this, having a substructure under them, where we could say, this money is just for rolling hills, and, and have a rolling hills person that, be on the board, or whatever, that was just something that we would have to commit to and pay money to get an attorney to look at whether that could be def, so that was that. There is no more flexibility on the 501(c)(3), it's, it's whatever you set it up as, and what part of our whole concern was, is if you're looking at the city council to establish whatever this is, the 501(c)(3), which is what we were being looked at to do, why would the city council, my position was always, why would you have the city council involved in it if it was for something other than city purposes? If it's for something other than city purposes, get, if you wanted to have a council member on your 501(c)(3) board or something, as an advisor, or, or something like that, you know, that's great, but it, it's not a city council project unless you set it up that way, and some of, some of them are set up that way, but in my, in my opinion, for what we were looking at, I don't want to be having, I, I don't want having the city council be sitting on supervision on the board of something that is not the city, city business. So, on the, the 170, by its nature, it is city business, and so therefore, there's an appropriateness there, and if you're using it for city business, not for anything, you know, personal benefit, we wouldn't be using it on anything that would be jeopardizing our status of, we'd only be using it for purposes that we're already expending our funds on, so.
Well, just to further on that, the two, the two cities on the peninsula that have 501(c)(3)'s that are, well, two, two of the cities have, their, their 501(c)(3)'s are set up with the city council as the board of the 501(c)(3). PVE does a little bit different, they have one city council member than four non-council members on that, and I agree, PVE, they didn't offer to allow us to tag on, the, the thought floated, and we didn't get very far with that, I think you might have met with an attorney, and then they didn't get too far beyond that, but I, I always felt a little uncomfortable about being under their umbrella, because it was still going to be the Palace Verdiest Estates Foundation, and somehow, we'd have to convince our donors to donate to that organization, but, but really, it's going to come to rolling hills, and it just seemed like it, it would get diluted somehow, or the message would, would get diluted.
And just, and the cost to even go in it, and they were anxious to have us join them, I think, because I think they would have liked to have had, whatever revenues we got, they would get 20%, if I remember correctly, was what the administrative fee was, that would help them out. And just as a note, the other city, RPB, which was going to be developing, is working on the 501(c)(3), it hasn't been approved yet, so that was months ago that that started. They've got a name, and they've got all kinds of things going on, but it is so complex to do it, there are so many issues and things involved, that it's, they still don't have it up and running.
Well, I, I think they created the foundation, Karina, you could verify that, but they, they haven't been actively, I don't know about, you know.
So, since someone left, it hasn't been, I think, wrapped up or finalized, but prior to my departure, because that was one of my projects, we did send it over to the state, it got kicked back, we had to address a couple of questions, it is, I will tell you, it is a very lengthy process, and we had to get the city attorney's office involved, who specializes in this area, but once we sent off the information, which I believe I sent it off in, towards the later part of the summer, it takes about 90 days to get a response, but since then, I, I did reach out to see what the status of it was, but I haven't been.
But I don't think they've been actively fundraising?
They haven't, and they can't until they get the final approval by the state attorney's office.
There was an announcement in the newspaper, close to a year ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that they were the, the latest city on the hill to establish a foundation, you know.
There was a series of meetings, we had to create bylaws, code of ethics, aside from establishing the name, establishing.
Bylaws.
All, all of that had to be created, and it was done in components, so it was, it was a process.
Who could we go to for advice about, you know, Jeff's question, would that Robert be the right person to answer a question like that, or questions?
So, I, I can't, I don't want to guarantee it, I would think that someone from my law firm, would have, have, have come across this before, the first thing I plan to do to. The first thing I plan to do tomorrow is send out kind of the all-city attorney listserv saying, hey, when you guys receive 170(c)(1) donations, has anyone looked into whether or not that counts against the salt cap? And if so, is there, you know, how do you guys address that?
Or is there an existing template on how?
No, exactly.
Receive with this.
Right, yeah.
Because I don't want to pay the start.
No, no, and 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 once again, yeah, we have, there are, you know, obviously, you know, didn't put too much effort into it, but there's, I was looking at it today. There's numerous resolutions with 170(c)(1) program guidelines already on our system. Obviously, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but this is not, definitely not something to, we would, you know, have to recreate the wheel. However, the nuanced question from Mayor Pro Tem Piper did not come across my, my, my head or else I would have tried to figure it out before tonight's meeting, but next time I'll check in with him prior.
And actually, when I was looking into this, that did come across my mind, but your issue about property taxes, most of us are solved.
Well, I know, but if I'm gonna write a check to the city of Rolling Hills, that just, any auditor is gonna be like, hey, this is another one. You can't write that off. It just is a little hand grenade rolled in there. If I wrote it to the uh, the Housid Foundation for blah, 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 whatever, they just wouldn't ignore that for five grand. They're not gonna care one way or another. It's just, it's just another thing that I'm writing to the state of California, the city of whatever, that 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 all that stuff adds up.
Right, but you still have your.
I know, it's just.
You still have your.
I would want to be sure that it works, because when, I mean, just the audits always appear.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have something I've been waiting to um speak about, but if we are gonna check this out, I think we should also, in addition to donations for tangible goods or whatever that could help the city, I did check this out with our city attorney. I think it would be good to investigate, assuming that, you know, we go forward to check out, have, using money for programs because of our limited staff, things that would benefit the city and its residents. We're all concerned about fire. There's a lot of effort to try to get people dialed in on home hardening techniques. And we don't have the staff to run a thing with, that would involve getting people to order gutter guards and and fire ember grids to protect their fu- their um, their uh, what do they call those?
Vents.
Vents, yeah. So so if we, and I checked with, they say, he would have to further check, but but I think that that would be something that would be very helpful that people could donate to. And as long as we don't have these people get extra credit for their donation, but have a program that's administered by a separate entity where they would take the orders, get the discount, deliver to people, all that stuff, that would be very helpful to be able to have things like that, not limited to that, but something like that.
Well, what I would like to do is if there is thought, and I don't mean to disregard what you're saying, but I think we're getting the cart a little bit before the horse here. I'd like to see if there's interest in having us work with legal, work with our finance people, develop, and not have to spend a lot of time on developing it because there's a boilerplate. We just need to tweak it for us. And see if we want to publicize that, yes, there is this mechanism and here's what the guidelines are for using it. And then, Councilmember Derringer, if you have suggestions, what about this? What about that? And I think we can look at those on an individual case-by-case basis once we get up and running. But I do believe that this solved or answered the question that was brought to us. What can we do to provide tax-advantaged status for contributions to the city? And I, sorry, I make a motion.
I make a motion, well, I'm supposed to make a motion and receive and file, but I think it's a great, we keep going. So I make a motion, we keep going and receive and file.
So.
But so, but so the, the, the keep going, I just want to be sure, is that that is to come back with a bit more refined 170(c)(1) program for consideration and implementation?
Right, yes. And cease looking, and at this point, cease looking at the 501. Would you do a friendly amendment to that? Cease looking at 501(c)(3) for now.
Sorry.
Okay, let's take an individual roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Derringer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
Yes.
Mayor Mersch.
Hi. Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to 13(c)(3), Dr. Resolution Number 1357, authorizing this for year 2023, 2024 budget modification to increase appropriations by $8,010 in the general fund area landscaping account funded from available general fund reserves for Bennett Landscaping proposal to trim trees around the tennis courts.
Good evening, mayor and council members again. Uh, this item is before you tonight, uh, primarily because, uh, although you have a maintenance contract for landscaping on the city hall campus and tennis courts area with Bennett Landscaping, uh, or Bennett Landscape, rather, we have certain things that fall outside of the provisions of the existing contract. And one of them is for tree trimming over 15 feet in height. Uh, we've had a need around the tennis courts, uh, not on other people's property, just on city hall property, of trees that need to be limbed up, uh, that are hanging over the tennis courts, creating quite a bit of mess in there and issues for the RHCA and whatnot. Uh, palm trees that need to be trimmed where we have palms falling into the roadway and the uh, gate staff i- is clearing out of the roadway. Uh, so we've, we put this on hold. Uh, we knew we needed to do this earlier this past summer, but we were waiting for uh, new city manager to come on board before we brought this back. Uh, and so, uh, as you'll see in the packet, Bennett Landscape has given us a proposal for doing all the different trees around that area. Uh, they haven't been done in years. Uh, and it comes to a total cost of, I believe, $8,000, uh, dollar, $8,010. Uh, so since we don't have it within the budget, uh, this requires a budget amendment to move monies from the reserves to the general fund, and that is the request of staff.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yes, um, there was indicated under the listing of tree trimmings, there was number two ash trees under tennis court number three that appeared to indicate that they belong to the neighbors, but that there's a need to cut back to the property line fence. Is that in in fact what exists? And if so, has there been any efforts to get the neighbors who own the trees to cut them back so that they're not overhanging into the city area?
Yeah, we can work with the neighbors and with Bennett to ensure that anything that is the neighbor's responsibility would be taken care of by them.
But isn't, isn't the property owner's responsibility and right to trim to the property line without miss, without killing the tree? I mean, I, and I'm not suggesting we get severe on this, but I mean, isn't that our, we could ask the neighbors, I suspect. Um, and actually, they probably have to get permission to come onto city property and and do that, wouldn't they?
Uh, most likely, yeah. I would need to do a little bit of research on what has been your past practice here, but if it is the neighbor's responsibility to take care of their particular tree, then yes.
But I don't think it's their responsibility to trim on the other side, city side, is what I'm getting at.
I don't, I would have to check your codes and see how that works, you know, usually.
Responsible from the property line, straight up our way. So the better question is, hey, we're about to do this. Bennett, what's the cost to trim the whole tree? You guys need to pay for the, your part of this thing because we can't pay for your half. And then it'd be a hassle for them to become on our side because we're.
Well, it's one of those, you know, Edison just tops. Now, we're talking about, you know, a vertical trim, which should really, I I don't know the extent of the overhang, how much it's.
This is not, I think, what you're referring to with Edison is usually to get their limbs and and trees out of the wire way. This is really more of a limbing up and simple.
But I just, I can't imagine it's going straight up on the side of a tree unless it's just a few, you know, two-foot extension branch.
Well.
Well, we don't have to go straight up. Well, we're responsible for straight up, so we'll just do what we're gonna do.
Well, actually, I mean, if the, I believe we could have our city attorney indicate this, but if it's the neighbor's tree and it's overhanging into somebody else's land, which in this case is the city's, then it's the primary responsibility of the person who owns the tree to trim their tree. Now, we could, if it's overhanging us, we have the right to cut it off because it's in our space, but that doesn't mean we have the primary job to spend the money to do that when they are infringing into the city area. So I think that there should be some approach to that. My, that's my understanding. Let me, Mr. Dogg, again.
Yeah, and and so I I must, the, the idea of of any property infringing onto city public property, yes, I think I would take the position that it is your responsibility to ensure that it's not a hazard or threat to public safety. The nuance of trees and 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 the overhang, I don't think changes, but I I could be wrong. This is, you know, I, we, we definitely don't deal with this a lot. This is not part of my uh, normal day-to-day. So if the direction from council, I think myself and and Christian would be comfortable saying, hey, you know, explore the appropriate legal position to take should it be a neighbor's tree. I didn't think there was any overhang from neighbors' trees, but if I'm wrong on that, then so be it.
Or does it state that? Is that the resolution?
It just says, no, it just says ash trees, neighbors, cut back to property line fence.
Yeah, so it actually calls it out, making it sound like it is the neighbor's tree and the tennis court number three. And it's in the Bennett Landscape invoice or or estimate.
Which one is three?
Oh.
It it's under, yeah, it's under tennis court number three. Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, no, the right side of the wheel. Yeah, it's one, two, three. So it's the leaves.
All right, so before we deliberate anymore, are there any more questions for staff? Hearing that, I'd like to open public. Hearing no public comment, close that portion. Now let's.
I make a motion that we approve as presented and that somebody from the staff is gonna talk to them before we whack the trees and see how they want to handle it.
Well, what's legally required? I think if it is.
Okay, we're gonna, I don't know how many much money we're gonna spend with Pat figuring out how to save $300 to trim a tree. Because the whole thing's eight grand and there's tons of trees. I think we just call them and say, hey, we're about to trim these trees. Do you guys want to do it? Or we're gonna go pf, and they might say, hey, we want to do it, but let's find out what that is. I say we just approve the money and let staff manage it from here.
And I also think that there's some goodwill associated with that. These people have the tennis courts next to them and put up with a lot. I personally would be willing to, I'd say, call the leaves and let, yeah, obviously let them know that we're gonna be doing and see if they're, they're interested, but for the few, you know, a few hundred dollars that it would cost for that portion of this, I personally would be willing to.
I I think we should pay for this and just let them know so that we can, you know, we could do this nicely.
Yeah.
With them, not, not for them or to them.
Yes, I agree.
Well, I don't know if that's the only one. This is the only one that actually says the word neighbors, but there could be any more, any one of these. This is done by Bennett, but I, so I don't know if there's other trees that are on neighbor's properties. I I don't think that the city should be in the practice of doing neighbor's trees because that's gonna set a bad precedent. That's all.
I don't think they are, we are in the practice of doing that. First of all, we haven't done trimming in so long, number one. But number, number two, I first, I mean, I think most of us know, you don't get a whole lot of tree trimming for $8,000. And so the only ones that they're calling out here as being theirs, I'm gonna say that that's a small amount compared to the other one. So anyway, let's.
Jeff, did you make a motion?
I made a motion we approve as presented with us talking to the neighbors and making sure this goes very peacefully.
I'll say.
Um, let's take a roll call on this one, please.
Wilson? Yeah, sorry. Councilmember Black.
Yep.
Councilmember Derringer?
I guess peacefully means talking to them about this, yes.
Okay, yes.
And do we need to remind them to do it?
Yes.
And Mayor Mersch?
Yeah, please, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. About matters from city council, I believe we're at 14A.
Yep.
Did you wanna, uh, did you want me to introduce it or you guys want to just take it?
Um, you can, you can introduce it and.
Good evening once again, uh, mayor and council members. Uh, this item is before you tonight as a report out uh, from the February 1st Peninsula Public Safety Committee and the Regional Contract Law Committee. Mayor Mersch, uh, that was her first meeting in attendance. And so, uh, her and Councilmember Wilson will provide a report out, but the staff report, uh, the agendas are included in your packet uh, with the materials that were there that day as well.
Thank you. And Pat's gonna let me do this. Um, it's my first time doing this, so I don't know how, really how much level to tell you on. I'm gonna try and do very just high-level, bullet kind of items of what we discussed. This was my first meeting. One of the things that I learned is that this particular meeting, apparently, there wasn't as much discussion as there was just um, report backs on items from previous meetings. There was a lot of information, as you can see by the amount of reports that were kicked in here. So I'm just gonna touch very briefly on what we talked about. Uh, the school resource officer, there was a question about is two still the right number? Bren is gonna be checking with the school board and report back on this and review the SRO activities for the last quarter. Wildfire cameras, the Pano AI, uh, it was brought up, they rotate every 60 seconds for the signs of smoke. They're still waiting for the San Pedro monopole. They need uh, permission from Southern California Gas to install on their pole, but the approval process is going through on that. RPB is working on press release and scheduling training for the cities to access the platform. Uh, currently, the alerts go to the chief, go to Chief Bennett. And then R and RPB gets, also gets the feeds. He couldn't be happier. Uh, good resolution, fast, great tool and exceeds expectations. So all is, all is good on the Pano AI. Uh, Chief Bennett, again, uh, great Pano AI. He receives the feedback and then the path from there forwards, he forwards to dispatch and it usually gets to dispatch prior to ever receiving any 911 calls. EMS response time is six and, uh, six minutes, 24 seconds average, which is very good. A lot of topics that were talked about with Chief Bennett was the rainfall concerns for Sunday through Monday. This was right before the big rainstorms. And the staffing, what they were doing and how they were gonna prepare for that. Uh, the 2024 defensible space and property inspections were going out that day. Discerned everybody's information, Zone Zero will not be enforced in 2024, but it's still gonna be a concern for residents and it is mentioned in the information that was being sent out. Ara from P, RPB mentioned there are the storms that the landslide movement, um, complex, the problems are getting worse, not better. The rains are causing more water into the water table and there are a lot of alerts going up and actions being taken ahead of the storm. David Hadley talked about, uh, about the ambulance response time is still too high. Chief Bennett's reply was that the fire department may transform, may transport to speed up in emergencies. They've also improved their radio dispatch to allow an EMS to leave a less critical situation where they're assisting with an ambulance to go to a more, um, to respond to a more critical situation. Um, private ambulances are not under the fire department's supervision, but Chief Bennett will reach out and see if he can set up a meeting with the private um, ambulance services to address that. Uh, there was an update provided on the Rolling Hills. Siren progress. ALKRs, the system is near the end of its life cycle and a lot of them aren't working. And the life cycle's approximately five years. Uh, to bring it up to current standards and technology, it's approximately $475,000 to replace. And that includes software and hardware and monitoring. County sheriffs and PVE police departments support it. Um, we questioned out if there was a bid out to other providers. There was comment that it was, you know, specialized and integrated and that they really needed to use just that one, the sole provider. But it still suggested that they look into that and see if that's the best way to do that, that we can't just come back to our cities and say, um, we're only looking at this one provider and if so, why? If it's that unique of that share, Rolling Hills is 13%, which would be $62,000. Uh, Peninsula Life Safety Drill, RPB's the lead on that. They're gonna be developing something possibly in April. And our next meeting is scheduled for May 9. When's the contract law meeting? Their sheriff's department, it wants to get some more LIDAR equipment. Uh, $70,000 total. I'm not sure the formula that they're using, but they said that the share of the Rolling Hills, if we. if we were going to go in on it, would be approximately six hundred dollars. RPD's the lead on this and they'll bring it back to us if there's any movement to go forward for approval. Virginal re-update, it's, investigations are ongoing. They're working DNA results and no arrests. Active shooter training has been going on in the school districts. The Peninsula Safety Expo, now that it's outdoors instead of in the Norris Center like it used to be, it really hasn't been a good way to show the videos and demonstrate. It was brought up that they would like to look to ways to utilize getting more ways to be able to get that out, be able to demonstrate that, maybe use the auditorium or the gym or something at the PB Safety Expo. And that's all I have and for going forward, if you let me know if you want more detail or less detail on this, I'd appreciate it.
I have one question on the percentage, our percentage on the license plate.
AOPR.
AOPR, thirteen percent? I don't remember that. But I wasn't making those calculations either. I thought it was more in line with our percentage for the sheriff's contract. A quarter percent.
It's seven.
For the ALPR?
Yeah, Rolling Hills Estates is thirteen percent.
Oh.
And how much?
I believe, I believe, and this will be on your next agenda, but I believe it's thirty-nine thousand dollars, roughly thirty-nine thousand dollars.
I took it off the table in the notes and I, I guess I looked at the, the wrong one. Yeah, Rolling Hills Estates. I moved to another city. I'm sorry. It's seven, it's seven percent and thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand, yeah.
So obviously you'd like me to do less information and make it more accurate.
More palatable, that's all.
No, I want to be the good cop.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question. So there was something that I'd asked at the last meeting for the committee to do, and that was to ask for the staff of the, of the Peninsula Cities to check into just siren systems in general. Not, not necessarily only our siren system, but to investigate a siren system and how they would interface. Since obviously when a siren goes off, it is heard beyond the city of Rolling Hills. And given that they have the, the, you know, the, the system where they're detecting fires, it would be good to have a complimentary system with a Peninsula siren system and provide the information to the cities so they can take it back to their individual other cities and see how that might be coordinated if there's an interest in other cities to participate in a Peninsula wide siren system. But I understand that that didn't actually happen at this meeting. But is there gonna be some direction for the next meetings to do that?
Hey, we did a verbal report out on the progress of our current siren system. And as a part of that verbal report, we did bring up the same thing that you had made a motion for, I believe, last May. And regarding whether there was interest from any other cities. The only city that has verbally told us no is Rancho Palos Verdes. The city of Rolling Hills Estates will bring it up to their council at what they, is kind of like their strategic planning session next month. But a, as of this time, there is no interest that staff is aware of from any of the other cities to pursue a more regional or subregional siren system at this time.
Okay, well, what I'm trying to understand is that I think all that was, was understood by my motion, which was not limited to Rolling Hills siren system, is that they would just report out what we're doing. But that, what I had, had said, and it was actually reported correctly, that, that, that staff come back and investigate multiple siren systems and bring back the information to the, to this committee so that they could get a more robust information about what is available out there to be able to help them make a decision and bring that back to their cities. It doesn't appear that that, that's done, so that would be helpful.
Say that this staff provided information to the other staffs last summer. And those staffs have communicated internally and/or with their councils. We're just reporting back that at this time, unless Rolling Hills Estates has a change of heart at their strategic planning session, there has not been any expressed interest to look into that any further. And so that's why there hasn't been further discussion at this time.
And if I could just address a little bit, add on to that. As I was reading the minutes from the previous meetings where it was brought up, there were comments in there from various comments throughout there about the different Larry.
Maislich.
Maislich.
Had, had mentioned certain things and, you know, that they should be included or that should be included. And there, from the previous meeting, there were suggestions or that these things need to be considered, how all these things will work together. I didn't hear any, we did not ask specifically, I didn't ask specifically and about more follow-ups on that. And it, it wasn't brought up by anybody. We did ask the question, you know, now is the time to make any comments about a Peninsula wide thing. So if, I'm going to assume that you would be with us at, in, as a member of the public at the next meeting.
Yes, I just didn't get a notification, but otherwise I would have been.
But, but I'm saying that you would be there. I kind of got the feeling that what was included in the previous minutes was telling people to go out and, and look and, and see. If we're not answering the questions that you want, maybe you should bring it up. Because maybe, maybe we're not conveying the thoughts the way you would like them to.
No, no, of course. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to bring that up that, yeah, on that issue. Thank you.
Any other questions from, any comments from the public? Hearing none?
I made a motion, receive file. Fragment.
In favor?
I have another council matter, just wanted to bring to your attention. If, yeah, just, just something that's happened today, you know, at the, at this cog meeting. Okay, so I just wanted to provide an update and ask that we put it on a next agenda for further discussion. But just to define what it is I'm talking about, I went to the steering committee for the cog today. And so at that point, they were gonna discuss whether or not they were gonna go forward with putting consideration of a dues increase for the cog. And, and so at that, the, the figures that have been propounded from the last meeting, and I made a pitch to reduce that for our city at the steering committee. And there was at least a motion made, because right now, I'll tell you what the, what the proposal is. Their proposal is to increase the dues for everyone. But for us, because we only got a one-year, I guess, reduction, which was thirty-five hundred for the dues plus a thousand dollars for the housing assessment for a total of forty-five hundred dollars, they were saying, well, now it should go back to where it should be without this, this reduction for the year. And so the, our cost would be, for the dues, would be a total of eight thousand ninety-one dollars. And so I made a pitch that we should keep it the same, based on all the arguments that we made before about our, our city now having like fewer than seventeen hundred people in the city, based on the, the latest census from the Department of Finance. There was a motion made by Rolling Hills Estates, seconded by Lumida, to, to have us pay only a thousand dollars more and that the rest of the cities would have to absorb the twenty-five hundred dollars that would be left.
So thank you for all the work that you've done on this. If what you're asking is, are we going, do you want this agendized? Is that where you're going?
So that's why I wanted to provide that, to, to talk about that in our House city. I was just giving you the information so you know what the agenda is.
We appreciate that, so.
I'm sorry, you said there was a motion and a second. Was there a vote?
There was a vote, but it did not pass.
Yes, the, and if, if I may, the cog board at their board meeting, which I believe is not this Thursday, but next Thursday, will be taking up this as a final vote so that they can start preparing their, their budget for next year.
So when do we need to make our decision of whether we're going to play?
Well, they're, they're gonna come up, they, they will make a, a motion for what the dues are. And then it'll be, staff will bring back to council the same item we did last year, and that will be whether or not you want to continue participating.
Do we want this, does this have to be agendized before they come back to us?
No.
No, we should wait till they have the numbers, we know what the heck we're talking about, then agendize it.
And, and that, hang, that's it, Mr. Mayor Proton, I, I don't want to get too much into the deliberations. I hear you, loud and clear.
But we do have a figure, so there's no further refinements. That's what I'm saying. I just wanted to be agendized for our, having our internal discussions.
I have a vote right now.
Hang on, hang on.
City attorney is at the edge of his seat trying not to have a laugh in the meeting.
On that, you know, any comments from the public? Hearing that, I'm gonna close public comment. What, let's give staff some good direction on this.
I would like to not put it on the next meeting. I'd wait till we got the official whatever.
Right.
No, the official whatever, then we put it on there, because I want, I want to make sure I'm here to vote.
But it, it is, as far as the, the, what the due structure is.
It's the proposed due structure.
I understand proposed. Let them figure out what they're gonna do, then we'll, then we'll do it. Because I'd hate it for us to do what we would do next time around. And then they come back and all of a sudden they're reasonable. Give them their opportunity to do whatever they're gonna do, then we're gonna do what we're gonna do.
But the, all I'm saying, I won't have, or Pat won't have, both of us, the delegates, any direction from the council if you just wait till the meeting where they're gonna be making.
They're going to do what they're going to do in this three months from now or do it then?
And, 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 and Councilmember Derringer, I definitely hear what you're saying about the nuance. But as, I believe it's Councilmember Wilson is the designated representative to, you know, go there and advocate for the city's interest. It's my opinion that he does not need explicit direction. You guys have entrusted him with that. And so should he desire to go there and make whatever speech he feels necessary or, or argument, he can do that without explicit direction from the council.
We want to be less.
I, I, I would assume that was.
We won't be less.
No, he said.
We want to be less.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes.
How much that we want to pay more or not?
But, okay, so I would just have to, we put on the assumed agenda.
We, it will be on an agenda and just when we're giving staff clear directions. You don't want, we should be coming, you're saying, when is it coming, when is it coming? We're agreed it's going to come. We'll have a discussion about it when we receive.
It will be either the next meeting or the following.
Halloween, so it's the twenty-sixth of eleven.
Whatever cog presents to us, or forewarned, forewarned is fore, forearm, please. So thank you very much. Any other issues of significant importance from the council? Matters from staff?
No, ma'am.
Have we won you out? No close session, adjournment, a regular meeting until February twenty-sixth at seven o'clock? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our office was showing us how bad.